Can I call the August 5th meeting of the West Sacramento City Council and Redevelopment Agency to order? We'd like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the Pledge of Allegiance, which tonight will be led by Councilmember Mark Johansson.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with justice for all.
The council did meet in closed session this evening to confer with our real property negotiator regarding the cordish property. The site number is in the agenda and direction only was provided, no action. Brings us to item 1A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council. This is an important opportunity for a public forum. The council is not permitted under state law from taking up action or having extended discussion of any of the items that are brought up under item 1A, but we do appreciate the opportunity for a forum. We do ask that anyone that wishes to address the council on this or any other item tonight to please fill out one of the yellow cards that's available at the door and turn it into the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everyone has a chance to be heard at a reasonable hour, and so to that end, we ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. We also recognize that for some folks, speaking in public can involve some nervousness and anxiety, and so we ask that there not be any boos or applause or cat calls or any other disturbances and that we maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers. And for our agenda items, we take the yellow cards all the way up through the conclusion of the staff report on that item. So, once the council discussion and questions and the public testimony have begun, we don't take any additional cards. So if you look ahead in the agenda and you think there's an item that you'd like to provide comments on, fill out the card, please, as soon as you can, and get it to the city clerk prior to the conclusion of the staff report. So with that, we have a couple of requests to speak under item 1A, and the first is by Bill Lowell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. William Lowell, West Sacramento, for the record. Not only am I concerned about the governor and legislators raid on local governments, but where it hits kind of even harder from my point of view and others like me is on the 4th Monday, I think that's the 23rd, Sacramento Regional Transit is holding its second and final hearing. It plans to cut back light rail service from 1:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and it plans to cut back all bus service down to just 8:00 p.m. And I find that very disheartening, and I think it's a losing proposition, and I think these parties trying to block any kind of a tax increase of any kind should have second thoughts because I'm afraid more of these folks, while we won't have access to night school out at Sac State and a lot of jobs they won't have access to, and I'm afraid that's going to lead to higher crime, and obviously that costs more money to house more people in the prisons, and we know how good that's doing at the federal level. They say we, what was it? Sounds like we're going to have to release 40,000 prisoners now, so I think somebody needs to take a class in economics and also effective September 1, I believe there will be no more transfers allowed or accepted on RT, so you have to get a daily pass or a monthly pass, and I think that's particularly hard on certain people on our side of the river because we don't have our own hospital. And when they go to apply for monies over on that side of the river, I would be willing to bet you that they take West Sacramento's population into consideration and say, "We serve these people," but if they cut out the bus service only to 8:00 and they don't allow transfers, well, it's going to cause problems. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowell. Ben Davis Jr.?
So members, I'm Ben Davis Jr. from Broderick, California, and as you know, I'm here again to discuss the fact that I'm losing my family home, the home I was born in, and I'm going through eviction proceedings as we speak. I'm here, I first want to remind you, because I'm not sure I made it absolutely clear, but perhaps I did, that I have a credit rating of 780, I have $20,000 to put down on this house, I have bank preapproval, and if I got this loan with the city's help, I would have a monthly payment including taxes and insurance of less than $500 on a five-bedroom house. So the communication problem I brought before you the first time I spoke and have talked about since with your staff is a great concern to me. Now I'm concerned that I might be having a communication problem with you, and in looking over your agenda, I noticed that the agenda item I'm speaking on says, as you repeat at the beginning of the meeting, that the council is prohibited by law from discussing items not on the agenda at this time period. Now, as somebody who's litigated the Ralph M. Brown Act several times and in fact sponsored legislation amending the Brown Act, somebody, I have some expertise on the Brown Act. I know this language is from that act and that there's not a period at the end of the sentence, but a comma. The comma after that says that there are exceptions and that you have actually quite a bit of discretion in discussing things off agenda to determine whether they should be on agenda. Now, it's hard for me to tell whether I just lack respect before this council when I come and speak before you and there's complete silence, even when I say things like I did last time, like your response from your staff complains inconsistencies with the truth, and I can prove it if you look at the record of the stuff that they sent me. You look at the letters they sent me, you look at what they're claiming now, they're completely inconsistent. When I say things like this and I get no response from you at all, I don't know if it's, you know, that you disrespect me or you believe that this period means you can't discuss things. So, I'm not sure where to go with this. I wonder if I shouldn't ask that this portion of your agenda be put on, on the agenda to be considered. I can show you quite clearly that the law, and I know from doing this many years, that the law provides you with a great deal more discretion than you've observed with me so far. A strict limit on three minutes, you know, and also no discussion afterwards, you know. Like I say, I don't know, is it me or is it the wording of this thing? Perhaps one of you explain that to me. Certainly after this discussion, I'll know whether it's me that's being disrespected or whether or not it's the sentence.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
I'll take that as my answer.
All right, those are the only requests we have under item 1A. So we proceed to item 1B, which is council communications assignments. Are there any reports or the communications this evening? Mr. Johansson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The West Sacramento Housing Development Corporation met between the last meeting and this meeting. We've got an agenda item that took up the bulk of the session, the ARCAT acquisition. In addition, we had our continued discussions on rent reductions in order to make sure that we've got the projects we currently have full. That has not been settled yet exactly what the reductions are going to be. We had a couple of discussions on some vandalism that's occurred at the Patios project, but apparently that was more construction-related and that seems to be subsiding. There was also one of the three meetings with the Housing and Poverty Action Coalition. This particular meeting was the homeless prevention meeting in Woodland on July 21st. The next two will be the affordable housing component on August 19th and the homeless services meeting on August 24th. And the meeting on the 21st basically surrounded the discussion around the goal of how to prevent homelessness through early comprehensive assistance to those at risk and things that we talked about a number of different strategies, including, I think, what we've discussed at the last time I reported, more of an integration of services, maybe using, there's a computer database that nonprofits use, the HMIS system, and to try to use that to hook the different resource centers that will be around the different cities, basically to create a type of a triage system where someone has a question about homelessness or if they're at risk, they could come into any one of these resource centers and be immediately put in contact with the right people rather than getting constantly spun around in the system. And so that helps particularly when what happens with these, some of these individuals is it's, you know, a matter of weeks before they're homeless. So it would be an issue of intervention. We also had a city-county two-by-two, okay, the issues there, the library project, it's, looks like there's going to be a grand opening, 11:00 a.m. on October 10th, and the public opening, it looks like, on October 11th. So that's going to be a good day in West Sacramento. We had a discussion on the budget impacts, basically at the county level, what that's going to mean, and we've had similar discussions here, and I'm sure we're going to have discussions as the most recent budget measures. We continued discussion on animal control. The question there is who should be responsible for that, the county or the cities, and really what needs to be provided. I think the way the discussion ended was that, well, we do need that, but who's going to pay for it? And is this service the community wants? So, we're going to have a discussion further as to, you know, basically how this can be paid for. There's a need for a new facility. It looks like it's about $4.5 million. The question is, who's going to pay for that? So, that's coming down the pike. There was a discussion on landfill, a possible look at renew the contract with the cities to maybe adjust the rate of waste collection, and I think those were the major issues at that meeting.
Mr. Vegas?
I did want to make an announcement. We actually have been, we've finished the recruitment and we've actually now hired, and I believe she's just finished her first week, Justine Jimenez is the new executive director of the universal preschool system, so we're very excited to have her onboard. I know that Carol's been working closely with her, and she's a quick study. I think she's up to speed already, so she's ready to go, so we're excited about that. And I believe she has already, and I want to make sure the council is aware of the date, there is a date for September 17th. I believe it's probably going to be here at the Galleria. There's going to be a provider social and year kickoff for all the universal preschool providers that we have in the community that have done a tremendous job, so we're hoping to get folks out and to recognize some of the work they've done.
Great. And then today, the city and the port hosted on behalf of Congressman Mike Thompson a business roundtable. Drew Hanson and I were both present along with Supervisors McGowan and Thompson, with Congressman Thompson, who was in town to meet with businesses around issues that they were concerned of. The bulk of the conversation was not surprisingly about healthcare and healthcare reform and the work that's happening in Congress, and since our congressman is on the Ways and Means Committee, was obviously very knowledgeable about what was happening, very pragmatic. He was, so he briefed the group on what's happening on healthcare, took a lot of questions, a lot of discussion, but it was a very, I thought it was a very positive, productive session for both the business folks who were present, but also I know the congressman learned a lot about local perspectives around some issues, not limited to healthcare, but it was a good session. Our staff did a great job with the chamber in terms of bringing local businesses together on like seven minutes' notice to meet with Mike, so it was good. All right, we don't have any appointments this evening, so the consent agenda is items 2 through 5. Are there any items on consent any member of the council wishes to remove or any item for a separate question or comment? All right. Mayor Portembeers? It's been moved by Mayor Portembeers and seconded by Mr. Vegas. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, hearing none. That motion carries unanimously. Item 6 is public hearing in consideration of Resolution 09-65, adopting a neighborhood stabilization program income reuse plan and Resolution 09-66, adopting an NSP residential anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan, approval of NSP homebuyer assistance guidelines and approval of NSP acquisition rehabilitation and disposition guidelines. Ms. Collins?
Thank you. As the council will recall, the city submitted an application to the State Department of Housing and Community Development to receive $1,047,543 in NSP funding. This is stimulus funding from HUD that is targeted for homes that have gone through foreclosure. The city's application proposed activities including acquisition, rehabilitation, and resale or rental of these homes, in addition to providing some homebuyer assistance if needed for buyers to make the homes affordable. All NSP funds must be used for households at or below 120% of area median income. Normally, we call that moderate income, but in NSP language, it's middle-income households. The guidelines that are before you are required by HCD in order for the city to receive its grant contract. First of all, we have a program income reuse plan, which says if we receive revenues from the program, we will use those for the same activities that were originally proposed in the grant application, and this is what HCD has required us to do. Secondly, we have an anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan. Again, this is required by HCD, and it states that the city will do everything possible to reduce or eliminate displacement, at least permanent displacement, of tenants due to NSP-funded activities. We do not expect to have any relocation occur, but we have to have the plan just in case. I'll go into a bit more detail on the program guidelines because there's a bit more there. First of all, we have program guidelines for the acquisition, rehabilitation, and disposition of homes. The program guidelines set out the city's procedures and policies for operating this program. We have designed this program on a model that looks for nonprofit housing developers that we will select on a CDBG, well, NSP procurement process, excuse me, and once we've procured the nonprofit housing developers, they will be authorized to purchase and rehab and resell homes with NSP funds. The city will be allowed, we have retained the authority to examine all the purchases and the rehab jobs, so we have the right of refusal on these. But we've tried to streamline the guidelines as much as possible because we know these developers are going to be in competition with investors in a market where many of these homes are selling very quickly. The goals of the program are to get the homes reoccupied quickly, to reduce the slow-selling inventory, so we're hoping we actually be purchasing homes that are not as enticing to developers, but, our investors, but we're not sure, and also to reinvest money into our aging housing stock, and the program is targeted to homes in Brighton-Broderick, although a couple other areas of the city are also allowed as secondary areas. So the point here is to invest money in rehabbing these homes and then allowing them to become homes for our residents. There is discussion in the guidelines about how the developers will be paid. Basically, we have used the HCD guidelines on this as far as activity delivery fees and what HCD calls a reasonable developer fee. We are allowing a reasonable developer fee not to exceed $10,000, and we've had two nonprofit developers submit proposals, so we think that this is at least reasonable, that we have at least two that are interested. Do you have any questions before I go on, on the rehab, acquisition rehab guidelines?
Mr. Johansson.
Yeah, thank you. On the, I know that the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency has a $30,000 fee or limit on the developer fee, and we're down at 10, and the staff report indicates that the reason why is because they couldn't get any for-profit developers in there. So why wouldn't we, if we're trying to attract our for-profit builders, raise up to 30,000 here as well?
Well, that was a discussion that we had. We also talked to the Housing Advisory Commission, and we wanted to try and turn over as many homes as possible. So we looked at different models to see how do we leave the least amount of money in the homes and still accomplish the goals of getting them rehabbed, getting income-eligible households in there, and turning them over quickly. And this model, only having to pay a $10,000 developer fee, there's a lot more money coming back from the sale of the home than if we're paying a $30,000 developer fee. Our biggest concern was, would nonprofits be interested? And that seems to be not an issue. As noted in the staff report, SHRA originally wanted to pay a $10,000 developer fee, and they couldn't get anyone interested. So, we were pleased that our program, remember that Sacramento Housing Development Corporation did not have activity fees, activity delivery percentages in there? So HCD does allow that, well, actually, they require that. That's a state thing, not a federal.
So that's a 19% rehabilitation cost?
Right. And HUD doesn't specify that, and Sacramento got their money directly from HUD. So they had more leniency in the way that they approached their program than we had.
Okay. And the other issue, I don't know if we've talked about it before, but are there guidelines for how these homes are refurbished? You know, because one of the things I think we're trying to do is beautify the neighborhood. So, to the extent, you know, fencing or whatever we need to do, is there any review process for that, or is, how does that process work?
Well, the rehab guidelines are in the guidelines. It states the types of, they have to be brought up to code. They will have, all the systems should have at least a 10-year life expectancy. So, you know, if the life expectancy of the roof is seven years, then they'll get a new roof. If the appliances are aging, they will get new appliances. The problem with exterior things is that the money can't be used for what HUD calls general improvements, and usually things like fencing, driveways, or anything extra that's not required by code or building permit or something like that generally are not eligible. Under CDBG, we can do some of those. We can do up to 10% of our loan or grant for those. NSP does not have that same allowance.
Yeah, I mean, for me, that's kind of one of the main advantages of doing this, is if you're trying to revitalize a neighborhood, you're trying to eliminate blight, and you know, if you've got a situation where the exterior, the grounds, or the fencing or whatever is just really bad and it detracts from the other homes in the area, that we should be able to do something about that, if nothing more than just, you know, take this stuff out and...
Yeah, we will, yeah, we will do it to the extent HCD allows it, but that's very, very limited. They have a list of things we can and cannot do, and so we have to follow that list. And honestly, I don't remember fencing's on there.
Okay. Mayor Portembeers?
Yeah, actually, I just, kind of in that same area, one of the items you list are energy efficiency, and it says, "Energy efficiency upgrades and green building practices are encouraged." Can we require that to be part of it as opposed to encouraged?
That phrasing is directly out of the HUD guidelines. We can require it if we wish, that we can put that in as a part of our...
Well, it seems to me that, you know, that would be more consistent with the direction that the city's going, is that we would want to insist that we do the energy upgrades. That's part of our goal. It seems like we want to make that commitment wherever possible.
There are required upgrades in here, but we didn't list a standard like...
Yeah.
And primarily, that's because we're trying to make the funds go a little further and turn it over for more homes.
Yeah, I mean, if I could, there is quite a bit of regulatory, the regulatory environment now is catching up very quickly with, through the green principles, and so it's already embedded in everything you do, from the roof to the insulation, to the heating and air, to the water, to the window. I mean, everything is designed to really be energy efficient, and so I would be careful to put language in there that forces them to do more than what's already required by the standard industry because it gets very expensive very quickly, and as we said, you use, I mean, you could use up all the money very quickly. So I just mention that as part of having gone for recently, it's careful with that language.
Okay.
I don't know, I'm still interested. I mean, the, I mean, those, because those standards are not going to get us to where we need to be to meet our community's AB32 requirements or any of the, I mean, the, I mean, just the regular, the regular materials that are out there. Some are going to be almost good enough, some will be, and many will not. And we don't, most of, most of the housing stock that would be rehabilitated through these funds, doesn't turn over, it's not, there's not going to be another rehabilitation five years from now. I mean, the major energy and environment and carbon effects that we deal with today are because of our existing housing stock, right? We try to impose high standards for a new office tower, for new residential subdivisions, but this is a tiny proportion of the total portfolio. If we don't deal with the existing housing stock with every option that we have, we won't get there. So, I mean, it seems to me like we have to find some balance that's more than just go out and buy, buy whatever you find at, you know, at a local hardware store, that's somewhere between that and spend whatever is required, because I think Mr. Vegas is right, we don't want, you know, we don't want it to be open-ended, but there is a value to it that is part of, you know, it's one of our policy, you know, top priorities. So I think we've got, we need to, we need to figure out some, some middle ground that moves the ball forward without, without depleting all the money or breaking the bank either for us, for this program or for the homeowner.
If this is the council's direction, then if I may make a suggestion, leave the guidelines as they are because they've already been approved by HCD, but we can be more specific on required energy efficiency upgrades in the contracts that we sign with the affordable housing developers, so that we will, that requirement would be memorialized in their loan agreement or their contract, which we expect to bring those to council at the next meeting.
And you would be doing that within some range of reasonableness, right?
You'll look into that.
Right, you'll be looking at that, exactly this question of how much, right? We want to push, but we don't want to push, we don't want to push over the cliff so that folks can't, either, or other folks who are doing this program, nonprofit developers, can't do it, or we run out of money. I mean, so we're, I mean, I think we're trying to advance both goals. So I appreciate you saying that, that makes sense as opposed to reopening the guidelines, but all I'm saying is don't take our direction if we give it. So, so far, that it's, that, you know, we're talking about, you know, $200,000 for a new water heater, right? Not what we're interested in. Mr. Kristoff.
I guess that, I would push the guidelines. I mean, I would really push it, so that when it's all said and done, there is a product that is really going to do what that kind of product is supposed to do. I mean, it's going to reduce the consumptions of energies. I would push that very strongly, and I would also push a higher fee. And the reason I say that is because I know there's a lot of small contractors out there today, that, you know, they're not going to bid on a $10,000, whatever, you know, a rehab. They're going to need a little bit more in order to make it worth their while. And if it means one or two houses less out of over a million dollars, well, I think in the long run, we're going to be better off for the stronger guidelines and our own little general contractors making a little bit of money. So, that's where I come from.
Mayor Proton Beers.
Well, maybe just as a follow-up, as for an example, like you mentioned water heater, well, instead of buying a standard water heater, maybe you buy the waterless kind. I mean, you know, those are the kinds of things I want us to look at, not just, you know, here was a water heater, now we're going to replace it with the same one, when we know there's a more efficient way of heating water now. So, that would be the kind of thing I would want to see if we could look at.
All right. Personally, I'm okay with raising the, whatever we're calling this, the developer fee. $30,000 is too high, that's too high from my perspective. I mean, I'm okay going up a little bit. I think the Housing Advisory Commission, I think, was right in trying to, I mean, this, what seems like a lot of money is not that much in terms of, once you spread it across, you know, the number of, the number of homes in our community, we want to make sure turn over, so we don't have dilapidated, foreclosed homes sitting out there dragging neighborhoods down. So, it's going to be, this is a drop in the bucket. So, we want to, we do want to make sure it goes as far as possible, but $10,000, I don't, personally, I don't have a problem going a bit higher.
Maybe I should clarify this, because I'm not sure, I understood Councilmember Kristoff, the $10,000 does not go to the contractor that does the job, it goes to the housing developer who would bid out a contract.
Right.
So, the developer fee is not going to make a difference to our, to our general contractors that are out there, that are going to be bidding on these jobs. What they get paid will be based on their bids.
But, a contractor could hear of this program, come to you and say, "Hey, look, I want to rehab this house." He'd be the general, he'd be the contractor, he'd be the developer, all in one, you know, all in one umbrella.
That, well, we've already done an RFP, and we did not get any for-profit developers that were interested, so...
Well, and I just want to clarify, because it sounded to me like you did an RFP, showed that $10,000 would be the fee, and you've got two nonprofits that say they want to compete, so we wouldn't necessarily need to raise it, we already got somebody that'll do it for that price, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay. We do have requests to speak on side.
Okay, and then there's the first-time homebuyer guy, well, excuse me, the homebuyer guidelines. They're not, this program is not limited to first-time homebuyers, but it, and it has much higher income limits than our normal first-time homebuyer program, which is kind of good, because we may be able to serve a population that's kind of left out sometimes. They never, they don't always have enough income to qualify for the home they'd like, and yet, they never qualify for any assistance. So, we're kind of excited to be able to serve people that may have been overlooked in the past by some of our programs. The homebuyer assistance program is modeled, however, on our first-time homebuyer program with a few changes. We're limiting the assistance quite a bit, to quite a bit less, but that's because this program does allow people at higher income levels to purchase, so we do not expect to need as much assistance per home, plus developer, the developer cannot make a, by law, cannot make a profit, so these homes are going to be sold at no more than appraisal price or the cost of acquisition rehab. And, so, they're going to have a fairly reasonable, affordable price, just by virtue of the requirements of the program. In addition, we're also allowing grants for homebuyer assistance. It's very possible that we're going to have folks that do not need assistance with the purchase price as far as down payment assistance, but they may not have the cash for the closing costs. And a lot of sellers out there right now are providing, are covering buyers' closing costs. So, we've built that into this program to allow these homes to be competitive in the market with other homes that are being sold. Do you have any questions on the homebuyer assistance guidelines?
All right, then with...
Okay, that concludes my presentation.
But then with that, we're going to open the public hearing on item six. We do have one request to speak on this item, it's by Mr. Lowell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, William Lowell of West Sacramento, for the record again. And, I hope I don't sound too repetitious, but I'm still concerned about whether or not any of these are going to be rehabbed, so that they are wheelchair-accessible, and, shall we say, cater to some of our aging population that can't get up and downstairs too good. And, and we're talking briefly about roofing. I was wondering, don't they have white reflective roofing for cooler homes? That would seem to save energy. And maybe, maybe those turbine vents would help. So, let's see, there was one other thought I had, and it slipped my mind, but I guess I'll have to let it go at that. But, oh, the question of $30,000 profit or something like that, maybe you could consider whether $3,000 or $6,000 profit, that might depend on how much total work has to be done on the place. So, you might consider, as a percentage of the overhaul, overall rehab costs, because a bigger rehab job would seem to warrant a bigger profit, if you will, for the right incentive. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lowell. All right, that's the only request we have on this item, so we'll close the public hearing. And it is the case, Mr. Lowell, as the conversation between Mr. Johansson and Ms. Collis pointed out, that the developer receives, can receive up to 19% of the cost of the rehabilitation and 8% of the cost of the acquisition and disposition of the property as a fee as well. So, there is already a value proportioned component to what the profit is that a developer would make on such a project. Ms. Collis, other information in response to questions or issues raised in the public hearing? Okay, then we'll turn to council. Any further discussion or motion?
Mayor Proton Beers.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would move that we adopt Resolution 0965 approving the program income reuse plan, and Resolution 0966 approving the anti-displacement relocation assistance plan, and adopt NSP acquisition rehabilitation disposition guidelines and the homebuyer assistance program guidelines, and that direct staff to work on the contracts with the nonprofits to make them more sensitive to energy efficiency issues.
Okay. It's been moved by Mayor Proton Beers and seconded by Mr. Johansson. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed, hearing none, that motion carries. Item seven is a community development block grant public hearing in consideration of Resolution 09-62 and redevelopment agency Resolution 09-63 authorizing submission of a 2009 economic enterprise fund application, and if awarded, matching funds for the grant, an amendment to the homebuyer assistance program guidelines and Resolution 09-64 transferring CDBG income program income to open grant 07PTAG 3005. Ms. Collis?
Thank you. There are three items that we're requesting the city council to conduct a public hearing to receive public comments about. And with the council's permission, I'd like to take these one at a time, as we go through the discussion, in case you have any questions. First of all, it's the staff recommendation that the council approves submission of an application for CDBG economic enterprise funds. This would be a $300,000 application. Economic enterprise funds can be used for assistance to businesses and also for micro-enterprise assistance. Generally, this money is used as loans to businesses, and all these businesses must create or retain jobs, a minimum of one job per $35,000 loaned. Generally, our loans that we've done in the past have created a higher number of jobs than the requirement, so we get a bit more. In addition to that, repayment of the loans comes back to the city and can be rolled off over to make, to create more jobs. So, when you start out with $300,000, you get a lot more jobs than you would initially think. The application also requires, doesn't require a commitment of matching funds, but gives additional points if we commit local funds. So, we are requesting a commitment of $20,000 in in-kind staff time. That would be from our economic development staff. That would be their time for marketing the program, for going out and making contacts and outreach to businesses, which is, I mean, that's things that they're doing already, but this would add an additional component of outreach for this particular program. We currently have funding in the business loan fund, let's see, of just under $200,000. We currently have three applications under review, and if all of those were funded, it would actually be more than this amount. So, we've got more applications right now under review than we have funds available. So, we're fairly certain that we will be able to use the $300,000 if it was awarded. Any questions on the business loan fund application? Okay, I will go to the next item, amendment to the homebuyer assistance program guidelines. Raoul Huerta, who now operates the first-time homebuyer program, is here if you have specific questions, but I'll just give you a brief overview. The majority of the changes that are being proposed to the homebuyer assistance guidelines are clarifications of existing policy. There are a few actual policy changes, though, and those are, item B4 in section 21 of the guidelines, changing the affordability ratio, so that we no longer will provide assistance to homebuyers whose mortgage payment is 28% of their income. Assistance will start for those that are paying 30% or more of their income, their monthly income, towards their payment. And, oh, we also added a complaint and appeal procedure to the homebuyer assistance guidelines. We've had a procedure that we've used in the past, but it was not formalized in the guidelines, so we added that to the guidelines. Any questions on the amendment to the homebuyer guidelines?
Mr. Viegas.
Thank you, Ms. Collis. Are any of these changes that you've suggested here, are they, would they have affected Mr. Davis, who's been here several times, was here this evening as well? Would they have changed circumstances relative to his situation, or no?
These are, no, the changes that are here would have clarified some of the questions he's raised.
Right.
I mean, our guidelines were clear to us, but they weren't necessarily clear to someone else reading them. So, it would have clarified some of the issues he raised, but it would not have changed the policy or the procedures.
Got it, yeah, thank you.
All right, other questions?
Okay, then we'll proceed to item C, which is a transfer of CDBG program income to an open grant. We have an open grant that is designated for planning and technical assistance to, for homeless coordination. And Councilmember Johansson mentioned some of the things that are going on with that grant. The development of the homeless tenure plan is primarily what that's designated for. The state does not allow us to use our program income any way we like. We have to follow the state's procedures, and they've basically got only two ways that we can use it. It can either go into a revolving loan fund, which is designated for loans, or it can be programmed into an existing activity in an open grant. In order to use CDBG program income to pay for the homeless coordination project this year, we have asked HCD if it would be allowed to put it into that open grant. They indicated verbally that that sounded like a good idea to this, at this point in time, they've still not confirmed that. So, if the council approves this resolution, it will be with the understanding that we may have to come back and change that if HCD changes its mind. However, that contract is coming to the council this evening, and we were, we want to make sure that we at least have the first year's funding allocated before the contract is signed. Any questions on that item?
We've already approved that contract, it's not coming, it's done.
Yeah, that was consent.
All right, any questions? All right, thank you, Ms. Collis. With that, we're going to open the public hearing on item seven. We do have one request to speak on this item, it's by Bill Lowell.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, and not surprisingly, I'm concerned as to whether any consideration will be given to the nearness to public transit and the frequency of the bus service that comes by, and I think that should be taken into consideration, otherwise we're saying, maybe some of these businesses are located in the industrial area where there's only service in the morning and service in the afternoon, where, again, I think that, I think midday bus service should be provided to fill those job gaps. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowell. That's the only request you have under item seven, so we're going to close the public hearing. Ms. Collis, are you still in the room? Oh, there you are. So, do you have additional information based on the issues raised during the public testimony? Okay, I then return to the council for questions or discussion. Mr. Viegas?
I'd move the action.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Viegas and seconded by Mayor Proton Beers. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, and opposed, hearing none, that motion carries. Bring us to item eight, and I know we've had some folks join the room since we started the meeting. If you have, if you're intending to speak on any of the remaining items this evening, you need to get the card in prior to the conclusion of the staff report. So, once the council's questions and discussion and the public testimony have begun, don't take any additional speaking requests. And so, I know there are some folks here who look as though they might be interested in speaking on eight or 10, maybe one on nine, but if that's the case, it's in your interest to get the card in early. Because, as I said, once the public testimony begins, we don't take additional cards. All right, item eight is consideration of Resolution 09-67 of the city council of the city of West Sacramento authorizing the mayor or his designee to submit an application to the California State Department of Housing and Community Development for funding under the Home Investment Partnerships Program, and amendments thereto, and any related documents necessary to participate in the Home Investment Partnership Program.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I wanted to briefly orient you to the, to this project and be available for questions regarding that. We do have representatives from the HDC here this evening, as well as the property owner, who may also wish to testify. The HDC has requested the city to authorize an application for home funds for the rehabilitation of 22 units, existing units, at 521 Fifth Street. These are units that are currently functioning as low-income units, but actually are not deed-restricted and not part of any existing program. HDC has a conditional purchase agreement with the property owner that would allow them to acquire these units and rehabilitate them with a successful home grant. The property owner has requested that the, if the project goes forward and the grant is successful, that 11 of the 22-unit credits be assigned to him to make up what he perceives as a difference in the value of the project, at least in his mind, and in terms of his particular needs, and what HDC is proposing to pay for that. And with that, the project would go forward, it's likely that we would not hear... It's likely that we would not hear about a grant for some period of time, but the application is due toward the end of this month, actually on the 17th, prior to our next city council meeting. So they need an action on, on the request at this evening's meeting. HTC doesn't currently have any detailed rehabilitation plan, so there's nothing for you to review at this point. And so we've suggested if you are inclined to authorize the application, we suggested some conditions on page one of the staff report that would really provide a process and a set of standards for rehabilitation that would assure the council has both the ability to review the activities and also guides them to prepare an adequate application, an adequate design for the rehabilitation. The application process is already underway, and as I said, will need to be completed prior to the council's next meeting. The council has full authority in this instance to authorize the application or not. HTC has no independent authority to apply for these grants, and so it's entirely within the council's discretion. Also, the question of the assignment of the credits is entirely within the council's Staff recommends that the city council approve the application and go forward with the four-part recommendation that's found on page one. Essentially, that would approve the resolution and authorize the assignment of those credits and establish those criteria for HTC and the rehabilitation process. I'm available for any questions you might have, and I suspect that the HTC representatives can also answer questions.
All right, other questions for the city manager this time? Mr. Kristof.
Toby, what's the appraised value of the house?
To my knowledge, the, the property has not been appraised at this point. It's part of the application process. We expect an appraisal within the next few weeks, but as far as I know, there is no current appraisal.
So how are we setting a value, or whatever they want, or whatever we're going to pay for this if we don't have an appraisal?
Again, we're not paying for it. HTC would pay for it. They've negotiated a purchase agreement that says they will pay $150,000 over the appraised value up to a maximum of 1.3 million. And so if it appraises at, from 1.15 above that, they will pay 1.3 million. If it appraises below that, they will pay less. And if it appraises at 1.6, 1.7, they will still only pay 1.3.
So no matter what, it's going to be paid 1.3, and that's what the 11 units are?
Well, you know, it's conceivable they will pay somewhat less than that. If the appraisal were very low, it could be less than that, but the likelihood is that they will pay 1.3 regardless of what the appraisal is, almost regardless.
That doesn't, that doesn't make a lot of sense. I mean, in today's world, I don't know when this property was bought or what, but I mean, the real estate market isn't exactly the...
It's not hot today at all. The, I think the property was purchased about five years ago, and at that time it was a pay, purchased for, I think, somewhat less than what HTC is going to pay. But in the meantime, they have renovated a number of aspects of the property, including putting a new roof on a portion of the building. So there have been investments in it. So it's not, it's hard to know exactly what it will appraise. I've heard comments from people who are knowledgeable in this area who say they think it won't appraise for higher than 1.3, and others who say it will. So I don't, I don't know. We'll have that, but from the standpoint of the, of the city, what we have is a property owner who says they will sell it for 1.3 if they get credits, or they'll sell it for 1.6 if somebody wants to pay the money, but they won't sell it for less. That's at least their, their stated position.
Okay. Mr. Villegas? Okay. All right, any other questions at this time? All right, do you have a couple of, a few requests to speak on this item? The first is by Paul Kalar from the West Sacramento Housing Development Corporation. Welcome.
Good evening, gentlemen. We'd like to clarify one incorrect item in the staff report, and that is that the developer fee, as the pro forma currently stands, will be paid out of the project budget. It is not deferred. This is part of the motivation of the HTC to pay a little bit more than the appraised value and give the owner an incentive to sell so that the HTC can gain control of the property, rehabilitate it, ensure that we have safe, sanitary, sound housing in this area, and essentially warehouse the property in the medium term with an entity that is friendly to the city. There is no funding required, no direct funding required by the city if this motion is approved, and it, the property will be rehabilitated to the city's green building standards. Finally, I want to agree with the staff recommendation that this is not a good long-term use of the property, but we believe in the, in the medium term, this will clean up a gateway to the city. It, it is adjacent to a property that we've just rehabilitated and will put good management in the property, and we think it's a good medium-term use for the property. As far as the decision whether to provide the 11 housing credits, or 11 units of housing credits, that's a policy decision for the city. I don't have the background or the, the information to be able to take a position on that. Other than that, though, I think the project makes sense for the HTC and for the city.
So Paul, so that means when you recommended this to the city, then, or when, not you, when HTC recommended this to the city, it was just flat, take 1.3 or leave it, right?
It was maximum of 1.3, 150 over the appraised value, maximum 1.3.
And the 11 units weren't involved?
That was not part of, that's, that's not within our control.
Okay.
That was not part of our recommendation, no.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Cleveland Livingston on behalf of Arcad.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Cleveland Livingston on behalf of Arcad Management. In discussions such as this, it's sometimes easy to lose sight of the, the prize, the benefits to the city of approving a resolution that would allow the city to capture over $3 million in home funding and to rehabilitate 22 units in a, in a redevelopment area. It would add these 22 units to the city's affordable housing inventory. It would also create 22 affordable housing credits, and we've requested that 11 of those credits be assigned to Arcad in order to bridge the, the price gap between Arcad and HTC. And it's also important to, to note that the reason that Arcad is interested in doing this project at this time is that it will generate cash flow which can be applied to the Allura project, the 70-unit market rate project, almost immediately adjacent to the 22 units that will be rehabilitated as a result of the home funding. And this is also of great benefit to the city. It's a project that will be of very high quality. It will be extremely green, probably the greenest project that the city has had to date. It will be in a redevelopment area, in a gateway redevelopment area. It will provide housing for the office development on the riverfront, including the Sturz project. In fact, we've already had a couple of reservations that have been made in this project by employees of the Sturz facility. It will also bring in $25 million in investment into the redevelopment area, of which $2 million is, consists of fees to the city. So I would just note that, that your approval of this home application has the potential to generate 22 affordable units upgraded, rehabilitated to green standards, and 70 market rate units in a redevelopment area that is desperately in need of renewal. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Livingston.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, William Lowell, again for the record. I'm trying to imagine this 521 Fifth Street, that would be on Fifth Street between E and F, I guess, but I'm trying to imagine where 22 units are clustered together there, but, but also Housing Development Corporation. I'm wondering, is that the same as West Sacramento Housing Development Corporation? Because I remember how they, they took over a bunch of homes over there in that neck of the woods, and then they later defaulted and turned them back over to us, and I don't remember what the cost was. I remember, I remember the fellow coming over and stating, well, we give up, we'll throw them back into your hands after we put out I don't know how much money to help that West Sacramento Housing Development Corporation. So I would be a little skeptical dealing with, with them in the future based on that experience. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lowell. Those are all the requests for public comment we have. Mr. Johansson is our representative to the Housing Development Corporation. Were there any opening comments that you'd like to make?
Well, yeah, I, we've, in the Housing Development Corporation, we had an extensive debate and discussion about this particular project, and it's, it's clearly within the mandate of the organization. The discussion's really centered around risks to the city. You know, there's a little bit of a, not a direct conflict, but there is, when I'm, when I'm sitting on the HTC, I'm wearing two hats, one with Housing Development Corporation and one for the city, but, and looking out for the, the city's interest to make sure that we're protected. I've had conversations with staff as well to look at potential downsides, and it appears that the, there are a few downsides in this particular move forward with this project and quite a few upsides, as, as we've heard testimony about. This is going to be going into an area that, again, needs revitalization. You know, just my personal feeling is that, you know, to show that West Sacramento is still moving on these types of projects, that we're still in business, I think really sends a signal, we've had the discussion, I think, around the Gateway Monument. You know, I think it's a similar type of thing that, you know, we've got things going on here, we're not dead in the water, even on this budgetary time. So, and we've had, the people on the HTC are very fiscally conservative, and I think this project has been vetted very well. And I'm pleased with the outcome as we stand here today. The, the issue that's before the council tonight, in addition to moving forward with this, is, is what to do with these 11 units, to directly allocate those to the Allura project. And, you know, I think, I think on, on that issue, without this project, there won't be the units anyway. So the city is receiving a net benefit of 11 units, housing, affordable housing units anyway, and then these other 11 are going to revert to the city in 10 years, it's my understanding. So, you know, I, I think, I think it would be good for the neighborhood. There, there are always concerns in any project we do, there's always some risk, but based on the discussions that I've had in, in the HTC, I think those risks are fairly mitigated in this situation.
I was at the Pedros de Casio opening, had a chance to see this property up close from inside the unit that fronts it where the refreshments were being served, and it definitely is in, it definitely is in need of rehabilitation. I don't think there's any question of that, and it is a problem site in, in the neighborhood. I mean, there, there isn't a direct, well, there are small, the direct costs to the, to the city of moving forward with the home application are not significant, they're not severe. They're modest, their staff time and other, and other related administrative costs. My principal concern is, is reputational, that, you know, that if, if the project isn't delivered, one of the reasons why we're, we're relatively successful, in addition to Tina, at securing outside grants for so many of our housing and infrastructure and interchange and rivers and, and all of our projects, is that we deliver. Agencies know if they pick West Sacramento for, for their competitive grants that we're going to get the project done, we'll get it done quickly, we'll get it done on budget, minimum of hassle. And so our reputation is really, really critical, and the home funds are definitely an example of that, is more and more of these programs get competitive, it's really essential that we, that the project happen if we apply for and get those funds. And, and so that, to me, was the, that's the main filter, and, and I've so far been assured, and the HTC has, you know, has been developing a record of, of delivery. And so I'm supportive, I want to make that, I want, I'm supportive of the project, I want to make that clear to the HTC folks that are here, that, that is, although it may not seem like we have a lot of money in the game, that is a very, very important matter to us, and so we are, we're essentially extending our reputation to, to the, to the HTC. Again, as we have many times shared this together, and just to ask that you take care of our reputation, because we need that for many, many millions of dollars of other projects that we would like to complete. Now, on the, the Affordable Housing Bank, I have a lot of concerns, and I, and I, and I'm not, I don't think I can be supportive of this element of it, and I know it's essential to the deal, but I want to outline what some of those issues are. If the appraised value, I understand that, and the, and the city manager shows his language carefully when he described, the gap, the, the purchase price gap is not a gap between an appraisal and what the HTC is willing or able to pay, it's just a gap between a property owner expectation, which in, at least in my, you know, 12, 13 years on the council, is always, always higher than the appraised value and, and, and what the HTC can pay, which often is less than the appraised value. In this case, the HTC is offering to pay the appraised value. If it goes over 1.3 million, then the developer's making the case that there ought to be some consideration for that, and we ought to transfer the credits. But under this system, the credits, as I understand it, are, the 11 units are, have a, a value in our inclusionary housing bank of over a half a million dollars, so $550,000. That on top of the, the purchase price of 1.3 million dollars, is 1.85 million dollars. Now, if, if, and there's, and that could happen, if, even if the appraisal comes in at 1.15 million dollars. And so there would be a $700,000, you know, which is a very, you know, it's, it's well over a 50% increase, 60% increase in the value that the developer is receiving compared to the value of the property. That's wholly inappropriate. It's a gift of public funds. It's horrible financial management on behalf of the city and the taxpayers, both the community and, and the state. So that as an arrangement, to me, is just not, that's not, that's not defensible. So the, the, the delinking of any appraised value to what our participation is, I think is not, is not sensible. Especially, you know, given what the, our cat attorney said, which was, it's possible to lose sight of the benefits of the project. These are benefits that accrue, as he said, to our, to our cat's project itself, which is the improving the quality of life and the value of properties in the neighborhood is of significant value to the Allura project, just as it is to us. And so the, the fact that this property would be rehabilitated would have a positive impact on Allura in its, in itself. There's no reason why the developer, in addition to getting the appraised value and getting the improvements in the neighborhood, is entitled to an additional gift of a half a million dollars. So we'd be doing that in order to, in order to advance the Allura project, which I also have concerns about, not the Allura project itself, but whether or not it's appropriate at this point in the housing market for the city to be using public funds of any, in any form to advance construction of new market rate housing. We've done a lot in the last six months, well, the last couple of years, just opening in the last six months of new affordable housing projects, and that's absolutely essential, given the state of the economy and the number of our residents who need affordable housing options, given changes in their own employment status and income, and that's really critical. The impact of adding additional market rate housing to our local housing market is not so unmitigatedly good, because it reduces, it adds to the oversupply of housing that we already have in our community from existing homes and other properties that are here. And I'm not suggesting that we have a moratorium on building. What I am suggesting is it's not really an appropriate time for us to be taking taxpayer dollars from taxpayers who are struggling to get by day to day, so we're going to use that to open up a new market rate project, which will compete against yours, when we have substantial vacancies in, in neighborhoods, all of which conserve the Sturz building and Rayleigh's Landing, in the newer projects at the, at Rivers Walk at Washington Square, at the LJ Urban project, even in Metro, I mean, there, there are... I mean, there are, you know, we've got these stupid foreclosure sale signs for houses that aren't in foreclosure, in the JTS area of, you know, within a couple of blocks of here. We have more than sufficient, brand-new, developed market rate housing. And so to be taking our resources to try to accelerate the production of more of that doesn't make, it's not fair to the taxpayers to be, to asking them to contribute to the reduction in their own, in the demand for their own properties and their own property values at a critical time like this in the economy. So I just, I have a fundamental policy problem with the city, at this point in the housing market, using its resources to encourage adding more surplus to the market rate portion of the housing market, until we're able to reach some stabilization on foreclosures and the rest of the housing working in community, in the community. At some point, we expect this property to be used in a different way. I mean, I think that was outlined in the staff report. By putting a long-term covenant on it, I mean, we are, it means we're going to have to replace those at some other, you know, if another project were to come in and develop here, we would be, we're going to be the ones responsible for replacing that affordable housing. You know, that's a cost to us. I'm okay with it, but it's, we should be, we should have our eyes wide open, that by tying up the property for, you know, in 20 or 30-year covenants, that if the redevelopment of this area, according to the Washington specific plan, were to proceed, that it would increase, this increases, could potentially increase the cost of that occurring. But lastly, I just, and this is the toughest part for me, because we're doing this project, and we did the Experience Motel. The developer, the property owner here, has a responsibility to maintain the property, to remedy these sorts of issues, especially a property owner that proposes to develop new properties in our community. And to say we're going to provide a half a million dollar reward for neglect, for the continuing neglect of a piece of property, is not appropriate. That's not the standard that we ought to be holding property owners to in our community. The property ought to not require this much rehabilitation and this much repair. And the removal of so many of the eyesores that I saw when I was there for the Patio State Castillo opening, at a great project that the HDC had done work on. The property owner's not a housing renovator and affordable housing developer, so they shouldn't be the ones doing it. But it's, I don't want to get in this cycle where this property owner, this company buys properties that are in need of dire repairs, and then sells them to us and demands a significant, in this case, you know, potentially 50% premium over their actual value, in order to contribute to ARCAD. That's not a moral outcome, from my perspective, and where we ought to be deploying the limited resources we have. So for me, I'm totally, I'm totally supportive of items 1, 2, and 3. I have an absolute objection to item 4, the way that it's proposed in the staff report, understanding, and I don't know how to get out of this box, that it is essential to the property transaction that the HDC has negotiated. But I just, I cannot get there for all of these reasons, in terms of the assignment of the Inclusionary Housing Bank units.
Mr. Kristof?
Yeah. Yeah, for me, one of the important parts to raise my comfort level, and I would assume to raise the comfort level of staff, and raise the comfort level of fellow council members, and that is, is the appraisal. We don't have one. We will have one before this gets sent in, but we don't have one now. And I think that that's important, I think that's an important component of all this. First, we don't have an appraisal, we fix up the units, and then we give back 11. I mean, that's a pretty tough nut to swallow. That's sort of hard. There are a lot of benefits that this development brings forward as far, and forward for the community. It does help fix up that portion of Fifth Street right there. And it will be of, you know, real benefit. I guess where I'm really stuck are the 11 units. I don't, I thought I understood this, I thought I understood everything fairly well, but it doesn't make sense. I mean, I would go ahead and support this if I pulled the 11 units out. I think that, I don't have any problem. I think HDC has done a super job with what they had to work with, really not knowing what the appraisal was. But I mean, I think they really tried to find some common ground and tried to make things work. But, and I think if it had been just their recommendation to us, and hadn't had any of these other things attached to it, well, it would have been something, I just, I would have supported. But I think with the 11 units, I have a real hard time with that, because we're just giving that back to the same developer. I mean, it's not like we're taking it out to the open market or anything, we're just giving it right back to them. It's sort of an extraction. You know, I mean, we've said a lot along that our fees, our fee structure and that sort of thing, which everybody complains is high, but we've said all along that that's what we're sticking to, we're going to do that. And this somehow or another tries to circumvent some of that. And so that's about where I am.
I have a concern on 11 units, but I think we need to step back for just a second, or at least I need to step back, because I think the issue is, for HDC, they think they can pencil this out for the price they've offered the owner. And so for them, that's where it works. For the owner of the property, they think that the property's worth more than that. And so the city is, I think, being asked to jump into this fray, to see if we can help find a mechanism to make the deal work, so that the project works forward, which I think it's an important project. And I've said in the past that I support a market rate project in that part of our city, because I think that's a good thing to do. Where I have the biggest problem, though, is 11 units, because I think what we should be talking about, if we're going to involve ourselves, is not 11, but a number based on what we think the value of a unit is, so that if the appraisal does come in higher, the 1.6, that we might consider a certain number of units up to the level of that appraisal, not 11 units, so that, you know, it's not a windfall issue. It's, are we willing to invest, let's say, four units at 50,000 each, in order to bring this whole project together, because of the penciling out of numbers? You know, which, right or wrong, they're just, that's where people are on this, is the number. So I'm interested if there was some sort of approach along those lines, Toby, where we could relate the number of units to the value difference between the appraisal and the agreed-upon purchase price. And the only reason I'm interested in it, because I think, at least from my way of thinking or understanding, that that keeps the whole, everything moving forward. It keeps the opportunity for the home funds, which is what, 3 million bucks that we wouldn't get, gives us the benefit of those units being improved by HDC. And Bill, I don't know where your information was, but HDC has run a super thing. I don't think you were correct in your recollection that HDC had any, anything to do with this other issue. HDC is a homegrown organization, and they really have done an excellent job. And then it creates the, or keeps alive the opportunity, and I may disagree with the mayor in terms of that, because I think that new market rate housing is important in the Washington District. And I think that that, if that keeps that alive, then I'm willing to make an appropriate investment into that with some partial movement of those, because of the appraisal difference, but not just a set 11 units, which I think is the requirement for the project. So, and I think that would be too rich of a proposal. So that would be kind of how I'd want to approach this.
Further comments? Mr. Viegas?
Well, I guess my comment is more of a question, if the city manager could address some of what's already been raised, but if you could expand a little bit for me, to help me understand, well, if you could just address what has already been brought up, would help clarify some of the questions I'm going to have.
Yes. While we weren't specifically asked to do this, we saw that there was a gap that had the potential of having this fallout of the public review without any consideration on the part of the council on these issues. We don't know where the council stood on any of these issues. And so we basically suggested that there may be a mechanism that would meet HDC's expectations and the property owner's expectations. We explored with the property owner several different alternatives for achieving that gap. We, at the outset, said that there would be no money, no cash money available from the city, and that in many respects, the number 11 is as arbitrary as any other number you might pick, and suggested maybe they would be restricted to certain uses, or maybe the number is different from 11. We were unable to get any alternatives. We were hopeful of actually being able to present to you alternatives for achieving some bridging of that gap, but were unable to get any others that the property owner agreed to. That doesn't tie the hands of the council of approving whatever you want, and staff has explored a number of different alternatives. The one that comes to mind most readily is to link back to the question of the appraised value. Now, let's say the property did appraise at 1.5. It seems to me possibly logical that there would be some effort to bridge that gap, and you could bridge that gap with some assignment of credits. You'd have to decide how much a credit would be worth, and you'd have to, you could provide a formula for that. That notion was not acceptable to the property owner at this stage, and we had, you know, a very, very short time to discuss this. We had virtually a matter of, you know, an hour or so last Friday. And so we weren't able to make any progress on that. If the council were to approve the application with whatever augmentation or no augmentation at all of the purchase price, then the HDC, the property owner and the city have whatever time between now and the application point to determine whether there's any deal that's available there, if you could set the parameters. And if the parameters are no credits, then that's the parameter. And if you say it's, could be correlated in some fashion to the appraised value, that's the parameter. If it's, you know, five units instead of 11 units, that's what we could work with. And then, then basically, you've had an opportunity to address this policy issue, and that was really one of our goals, because we felt uncomfortable at staff doing nothing. On the other hand, we had no capacity to enter into a deal. And so we were going to try to present you something and give you a policy debate.
Which you have, I think.
And, you know, you may regret that.
They clearly have. So between that, so part of this is being driven by the timeline of the application, but between our discussion tonight, there is still room to figure out how to proceed on some of these issues that have been raised this evening.
Right.
But the application is specific about what project and where, or is it just the project? I mean, how specific is the application relative to what we're being?
Well, I believe that the application, and I could be corrected on this, but I believe the application will have to include control of the property. And so they will have to have a deal before they send it in. It doesn't mean they have to own the property, that won't happen until the grant actually comes through. But, so sometime between now and the 17th, HDC and the property owner will have to reach some understanding that's compatible with whatever direction the council gives us. And HDC has resources, the property owner has resources, maybe there's a deal to be made, maybe there isn't. And I think what I would suggest is to, if the council can concur on some direction to staff and take your action, it sounds like there's pretty uniform support for the notion of the application, and it's only the question of, does the city do anything in the form of credits? If you can give some guidance in that area, then I think the chips fall where they may.
Well, I'll chime in maybe just a little bit. And the idea that it's Fifth Street is, I mean, I love that idea, I think it certainly needs additional attention. HCD's involvement is always extremely helpful, and particularly with their reputation on some of the work they've done in the community. The idea of, what bothers me is the idea of this half a million with a market rate product, given the housing economy. I just, I mean, I concur with the mayor's assessment of how do we, how do we, how do we justify doing that at this time, given the glut of homes that are available? And nobody really, really knows at this point kind of where the market is going, despite what you might hear week to week. So I just don't, I don't know.
I think that's a fair question, but you'll recall that these credits have a 10-year life. And so the circumstances that exist today may not be the circumstances that exist in five years, or three years, or eight years. And it's very unlikely that they could build 70 units absent a demonstrated market. Their intent is to build a small number of units, and as they sell, build more units. And so they really have to demonstrate the demand, and that's the only way they could ever use the credits with respect to ARCAD. Now, they're proposing to have the credits be transferable, if they can't use them, they could sell them to somebody else. You don't have to allow that either. That's a policy question as well for you.
Do we, and I know, that's actually one of the questions that I had on the front page of the staff report. So they may transfer these units to another party? Is that, as I described, I mean, how does that work?
Well, this is, you know, we actually proposed the notion that they be restricted to the use by the developer on, not necessarily the Alora project, but any project that the, that ARCAD is affiliated with. And the property owner at that point was, or the representative was unwilling to do that. But that doesn't mean that you can't impose that condition, and they can either take it or not.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I don't quite know how to phrase this, but to move this along, I mean, I think we all would like to see something happen on Fifth Street. So I would move the first three, and then I'd give some flexibility to the HDC somehow to come up with a value between the appraised value and what these units are. I mean, we sort of have set a precedent in the past, they're about $50,000 a unit. So somehow or another, I'd like to, you know, see if there's a way which, I can put, we can put that into a motion. I don't really quite know how, but somehow put it into a motion, so that they have a chance to go back and talk to HDC. And quite frankly, if the developer doesn't like having any restrictions as far as the 11 units are concerned, and doesn't want to have an appraisal, well, then, you know, I mean, that's their decision, that's not ours. But we've got due diligence to do here, and we really, I don't think should be just giving money away if that was the circumstance. I'm really not sure, because I don't know what the appraised price of the property is.
Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, I would, I would be concerned of, you know, I think the first thing that attracted me to this, this concept at this late stage was to not leave money on the table. And I think if there is home money out there, then we should do whatever we can to do that. I'm hearing what other council members are saying, as far as overpaying, or potentially overpaying for those, you know, I don't think we really know what these inclusionary units are worth in this market, that's one issue. But, you know, it, we've had this discussion, I think, at the HDC, and it's more of a council policy discussion, it's actually, well, if it's a project that's good for the neighborhood, you know, what can the city do to move that project along? And we've had that with a number of different projects, catalyst projects in other areas, that, yeah, it's not, you know, it's really not a normal transaction, it's an abnormal transaction, because we're looking at, again, pioneers, about looking at revitalization, looking at the benefits in an area that are very intangible, they can't really be traced to a particular project, but they could be traced, for example, to have more bodies on the street if you do get some kind of mass transit in there, that will lead into maybe the ability to get grant funding for that, you know, to show that kind of movement in an area. So I think it's important not to really look at this carefully and move it forward. So, and as far as the addition of additional units, well, we do have a lot of units available in West Sacramento, but they're not particularly units that, you know, people that want to live in the urban environment, that we're trying to create. that want to live in the urban environment that we're trying to create in the Washington neighborhood, and Bridges District for that matter, are going to buy. I don't think you're going to find the same buyer that would go in and buy a rehab in Brighton-Broddick, or, and Bridgeway Lakes, or wherever, Bridge Island, or wherever. But they want the more urban experience of being along the riverfront. It's kind of what we're trying to do, is get people there. So, you know, there, there is some development in there. I know there have been some failures in there. I understand that the market's not particularly right, but, you know, the market's, seems to be stabilizing now. We do have a big employer that's coming into the area. And I just think it's important to show, if we can, if we, if it's responsible to move forward, and, you know, and not miss a deadline for this home application. And I'm not sure how the developer would, would, would react to that if we pull the 11 units off, or if there's some leeway between, you know, based on our appraisal value, I don't know. But I would like to, whatever mechanism we have, I'd like the, the application to proceed and not miss that deadline. Because we can, it looks like, get the appraisal here on time, we can get the application in on time, and, you know, I think we should do what we can to move that.
Mayor Proton Beers?
Well, I, I'm not sure if Bill started a motion, or?
I started, well, it, it, I just.
What, what exactly happened? It, it sounded like the first three were, were pretty solid in terms of your motion. It occurs to me that, you know, we should just try something and see what, what happens in, in, in the spirit of what you were talking about. But I think it's actually, it wouldn't be the HDC, it would be the city, because the city would be the one that had to have the authority to move the, to incorporate the affordable units in the count.
But I think.
But I, but I think it would be, because, I mean, the HDC already has the ability to change their offer, but I don't think they're either financially able to, or they don't think it pencils out. So, so it's that gap between what the perceived appraised value is, to me, is the, at the bottom, bottom line. And so, I'd be willing to support something that moves forward that says, should the appraised value come in at, at the, the 1.6, that we give the city manager authority to value the, appropriately value some of the house, some of the, the credits to fill that gap in this instance. And the reason, and, and further though, that I would, would restrict it to the Allura project, because that's my only interest, is to try and revitalize that particular area. So, I think that the combination of the affordable housing and the Allura project, if we can be something to facilitate that, because it doesn't cost the local taxpayers anything because we're using the home funds, which we'll get zero for and have zero units if we don't do something. So, that would be the direction I would want to go, and I'd be willing to make that a motion if, if there's no further discussion.
Well, for me, the important part is.
Just, just under, is there a second to the motion?
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, spin second by Mr. Johansson. Mr. Kristof.
Okay. I mean, HDC's done a lot of work. HCC came up with the figure of 1.3, and that's what they said, last, best, and final, if you want to, I don't know the terminology, but, you know, this is, this is how it goes. And I think we ought to hold to it. I mean, that's what this is all about, and, you know, if there's some way to get four units instead of 11, or whatever it is, I mean, I don't know what the significance of the 11 units wa, is, because, I mean, you know, if this was me doing some kind of a deal, I wouldn't get, you know, a second bite out of the apple. I, I don't, I'm sorry, it just doesn't work that way.
I'm not trying to sell you on it.
I know, I know, but, you know, so, it, it's, I don't know, it's, it's just like, I mean, I love the project, I would go ahead and I would support the project with the exception of the 11 units. I mean, it's, and if there's a way to, to figure out some formula, as Toby was talking about, so those 11 units are fluctuating, I would be more than likely hear it. Well, I'm not sure, I mean, I.
I don't know, ask Toby if that's.
Well, I, I think what I was inferring is that, that Wes would be willing to make up the difference between the appraised value and 1.3 million by assignment of credits and valuing them, and what I've heard is $50,000. I'm sure the, the property owner would prefer a different number, but if you had that as an, as an index, you could, you would spend a maximum number of six, and it would be whatever it turned out the appraised value was. So, if it appraised at 1.3, there'd be no credits. Appraised at 1.5, there'd be four credits, 1.6. But I assume that you would cap it at some point and wouldn't go above 1.6.
All right, is there, I'm with, I'm with Mr. Kristof, but further, I'm, anything that includes an item four, I'm not going to support. I won't support the entire project if it includes the inclusion, this inclusionary package. I think it's, it's, it's unacceptable from a fiscal or public policy perspective, and it pollutes the whole project. So, I, if that's in there, I'm not going to vote for one or three, one, two, or three either. Mr. Viegas, did you have final comments?
Yeah, so, so then, but they, but they have to go to get, well, unless you go with Wes's motion, they need to run together, right? I mean, they, otherwise it doesn't pencil for the developer. I mean, the lower pro, so, maybe I just missed, does he need all 11 to, and the developers, from the developer's perspective, do they need all 11 to make the project pencil?
The developer testified at the beginning that they, they were interested in one through three, that they, that the issues of one, of item four were entirely between the city and the, and the, and the property owner.
Okay.
That, I mean, that was their, I mean, that was very clear.
Yeah, I, I believe that the HDC is on record saying that they want to pay 1.3, and that's as far as they want to go. In earlier discussions, they had, had talked about 1.6, but that's where they've settled as a majority action of the HDC. I think that actually may have been unanimous. With respect to the property owner, I, I can't tell you what's in the heart of the, the property owner, but they've indicated that 1.6 is what it will take to motivate What would happen if you took an action, something like Wes has suggested, is that it, it still leaves a lot of grayness as to whether that would be acceptable to the property owner? If you take an action that, that simply is one, two, and three, that's clear, and then if there's anything to be made up, it's, it's likely to be, well, it'd have to be between HDC and the property owner. It wouldn't be between the city. If you do something like Wes does, the city is a participant, but it's a participant in a very constrained arena. We don't have so much that we can do. So, I think that's the dilemma that's before you, and you have a motion that, that does the latter. If you don't approve that motion, that doesn't mean you can't come back and make a motion to do one, two, and three.
All right. Further discussion on Mr. Viegas's motion? All right, then.
Well, what exactly, I guess what I don't quite understand is, is, just rephrase the motion, Wes.
Would you like me to?
Yeah.
Suggest how?
Because if you implement, if you say, you know, it's built to listen.
The motion would be to allow the, or provide that the city would extend credits, assign credits in a proportion related to the appraised value, such that any appraised value above 1.3 million would then be assigned proportionally a number of credits based on $50,000 per credit.
Up to 1.6.
Up to 1.6.
For the Allura project.
And it's restricted to the Allura project.
Is that clear?
Mm-hmm.
All right, then, Madam Kirk, would you call the role on Mr. Viegas's motion? I'm Mayor Proton Beers, sorry.
Councilmember Kristof?
Yeah.
Councilmember Viegas?
Yes.
Councilmember Johansson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Beers?
Yeah.
Mayor Cobalden?
No, and that motion carries four to one. That could dispose of item eight. Item nine is a status update and request for direction on the general plan update. Ms. Gentarski, Mr. Rickel.
There'll be, there'll be a voice message.
Oh, Mr. Patek. I'm sorry, we, we generally prefer that our consultants sit in those seats out there. But, Mr. Rickel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. With respect to the general plan, we're well into the second year of what was originally about a three, three and a half year process. We have the firm of Interior Harnish under contract, and recently, we've hired the services of our former community development director emeritus, Steve Patek, to assist us on, on this effort. So, where are we at, at this point in time? We completed the Issues and Opportunities Report that you remember last year, which is really a framework, which is really a framework and foundation for the policy document. Last year, the council adopted the housing element, and that housing element, of course, was certified by the Department of Housing and Community Development. We've been engaged in a, a public outreach effort. We tried to make our, our website available to, in several different languages. We have had small group meetings, several meetings with, at least four meetings with the Russian community, meetings with the Latino community, two newsletters have been prepared, two City Lights have been prepared. We have a mailing list of, of several hundred people that receive updates on the general plan. We're also close to producing a background report, and that background report is really a snapshot in time of where the city is with respect to land use, social, and environmental issues, and we anticipate a public review draft of that coming out later this month. In addition, but not identified specifically in your staff report, myself and with the assistance of Mr. Patek, have been working on, on drafting portions of the policy document, bringing it up to date and based on reality with some of the issues that are important in planning into the community in 2009. And where we are now is that we've been working over the last several months on the alternative land use concept or diagrams, which is really the focus of tonight's discussion. The schedule brings us to having the general plan up for adoption by late 2010, early 2011. One of the major driving forces of that schedule is preparation of the environmental document. We'll commence with the environmental document once we have a land use alternative that's been determined. The major phase of the general plan that we're in now is the alternative land use diagrams. And basically, three land use diagrams will be presented in this phase. Each alternative will identify specific levels of intensity and build out for the city. And each of those alternatives will be compared with the base case, which reflects the existing adopted general plan land use diagram. Now, these alternatives are intended to illustrate general concepts and principles, but they don't focus on individual parcels. They will be published in a newspaper format, and our goal again is to have this document out at the end of August, 1st of September. And those three general alternatives are, A, which is really a minor modification from the existing general plan, just makes some relatively minor adjustments. The second one is an intensification, densification of major area districts and corridors in the city, giving particular emphasis to Pioneer Bluff, Stone Lock, West Capitol Avenue, and the West End. And the final option really looks at expansion of the city both north and south of the existing limits. And these individual options are not really meant to be necessarily mutually exclusive, but they, individual concepts can be taken and combined. So, the general plan work program, as presently constitutes, at this point in time, provides for a workshop after the release of the land use alternatives and prior to review by the Planning Commission. That workshop would be similar to one at the commencement of the general plan process about two years ago, and it would contain several interactive exercises and be held in the Galleria. Following this meeting, there would be a minimum of two study sessions with the Planning Commission, and then a workshop and public hearing before the city council. So, that's as we're presently constituted. We've also come to you tonight with a second alternative, and that second alternative would be a change in the schedule to basically host, have the Planning Commission host the community workshop. It would be the only item on the agenda, it would also contain interactive sessions. The workshop would allow for the commissioners to come up with speed on the general plan, as well as hearing from the community what their reaction to the alternative is. It would consolidate two meetings into one and allow for a more efficient use of staff and resources.
Steve, can I, can I just inject real quick? Before, before we move on too far, one thing I just want to make, at least put out on the table is, given how, how many different ways in which folks now communicate very differently than what we've traditionally done, I just would like to see us at least put on the table opportunities to interact electronically with folks about our general plans. This is a huge document with a lot of information, and the idea of having just a kind of couple of public meetings on a Thursday night or a Wednesday night, it just, I don't think it does it justice. And so, I think we ought to explore putting our stuff on the web, letting people interact electronically at their convenience, because I think this is too much of, it's too important to just have it be the way we've traditionally done things. So, I just want to, sorry to interrupt you, but I want to just make sure we're, we're contemplating those.
And, and we are contemplating that, but I don't think to the degree that you brought up Councilman Viegas, so I think that's a, that's a great idea. One of the things that.
Everyone goes to Charlene's Facebook page, maybe we could just put it on that. There you go.
I was thinking of that.
Probably get wide distribution.
So, anyway, that, the second, so going into the second sort of alternative is, is basically one of consolidating the public outreach meeting with the Planning Commission, and then trying to advance that portion of the schedule to move up the workshop that would normally occur after the Planning Commission has had their study sessions, and have the council hear it before the final session, the council session. I mean, the general notion is, is what can we do to sort of advance the schedule, and that was sort of the basis for coming here tonight, but also to just sort of bring you up to date as well as where we are in this process, a process that, you know, took us three and a half years, took the city of Sacramento five, took Yolo County four and a half, and we'd like to, to get it done. So, that's basically where we are tonight, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions about the process, where we are, as well as get direction as your thoughts on how to proceed on the alternative phase.
Mr. Johansson?
Yes, Steve, my, my biggest concern about, in, in the spirit of efficiency of collapsing these things down too much is, I think one of the issues in this town is, is people like to be involved in the decision-making process. And I don't know how many times I've heard that, you know, city council's not the place to come in and express your views, because we've got three-minute limitations and it's restrictive, and, and these workshops tend to work a lot better, they're more visionary, they're more brainstorming. So, can you kind of help me, what would the agenda be in a combined meeting? Kind of walk me through the process. Would it be in this chamber? Would there be commissioners sitting up here? Would be people on the audience, they have to come to the dead, to the microphone? How would that work?
The process would be, it would be held in the Galleria. The commission, commissioners would be present. We would engage the audience by an overall presentation explaining the alternatives, and then be involved in several interactive exercises on, on small tables to find out what are some of the issues that you have with the free alternatives as presented. What do you like about them? What do you not like about them? How do they relate to the areas of the city that you live in, or you have concerns in? So, the whole effort would be try to engage them on a, on a small table exercise basis on, as I indicated, with interactive exercises. Take that feedback back, and then eventually have the Planning Commission be actively involved in seeing that form of reaction of the community, then eventually present it to you, as well as summarize it on the web, and the other means that we have of distributing the information.
So, would the Planning Commission be delivering? Would it be a regularly scheduled meeting? Would they sit as a body, come up with formal recommendations, or is it just, you know, people hanging around the Galleria? I'm, I can't really picture what.
Well, the, the concept is, I indicated in the staff report, and there's probably countless ways of doing it, is that it would be done as part of a regularly scheduled meeting of the Planning Commission. So, on the 17th of September, should we hold? So on the 17th of September, should we hold to that date and be able to make it, the planning commission, instead of convening upstairs, would meet downstairs, it would be the only item on the agenda. There's other ways to do it, it's just that we thought, and sort of strategizing on this, this would be a great way to maybe to combine a couple activities together, as well as getting the planning commission involved in the process. So that's the concept.
One of the, one of the issues with collapsing it down is, a lot of times it's hard for people to make a particular evening if you have one meeting that's going to be, have a significant impact to the community, and people can't make it, then they're out of luck. And that's why I think a lot of, like, you know, we were going through this issue with the port, we have a series of meetings that if you can't make it to one, you can make it to another, so there's, and it's basically the same agenda. I mean, personally, I'd like to see something like that, rather than trying to collapse down to one meeting and we're done, because I don't think you're going to get the input, and I think you're going to have a lot of people that are going to be upset, because they feel that their voices weren't heard. I mean, that's, you know, when I think about that.
I have a, I think, an aligned concern, which, and it relates also to what Mr. Viegas said, is that, literally, 99.9% of the residents of the community will not participate in whatever meeting or workshop or charrettes or what have you we convene. And unlike a jury, we're not randomly compelling people to come to participate. So it isn't, it isn't a slice of the community that just happens to show up, right? So, you know, there are folks here that are here, Nathan's here tonight to testify about medical marijuana. I've never seen him at a planning commission workshop, doesn't mean he's not civically engaged, just maybe he's, maybe he's just satisfied with the general plan the way it is, so he doesn't see the need to come out. And that perspective, that which is either I'm happy the way it is, or I think, you know, other folks are taking care of it fine, is totally, is a totally legitimate point of view to have in a democracy. You don't have to be angry enough to come out in order to be a legitimate citizen. And so the public workshops are really essential, but they cannot be the whole thing. And so Oscar's point about new media is certainly a valid one, an important one, and I support it. But for me, the challenge is almost the opposite, which is that the planning commission, by being in that workshop, then, because they've been immersed in just that, and then they leave that, and you're asking them to start taking actions, is that what would happen?
No, not action, not action at all. They, it would just be a meeting, and then most likely we would have a study session specifically with them on a following meeting, or within the month.
So you're just, so you're just using the, the brand of the planning commission, because you think that's going to attract more people to come, or what's the, what's the, if the planning commission itself is not doing anything, what's the, what's the, what are you actually saving or gaining by collapsing them together?
Well, I guess the intent was really, or our goal was that we'd be able to engage the planning commission in the process in a, in a different sort of way, so.
I mean, I think you could still, you could do that without declaring it a meeting, in part for the reasons I mentioned, and the other is, is that it, it does change, you know, the extent, we have, for example, the things around the port, which I think we all agreed was a really good set of public engagement, we've had other sessions like that, including on the general plan. The nature of citizen input in those roundtable discussions is a little bit different when it is just a conversation among citizens around a table, as opposed to believing that it's essentially testimony that's happening right in the moment. It becomes more positional. The perspectives that people bring to these citizen engagement processes, when it looks like it's right immediate to the, to the decision and to the decision maker, does tend to reduce the level of collaborative activity, and the, and the sense of long-term perspective and vision, because you think that you have to say what is going to be necessary to influence, in this case, the planning commission, because it's a planning commission, you know, session that's being held. So I would just be careful. What we're trying to achieve is to get people to really get out of those boxes, and to think about the whole community in the long, the long run and all of that. And you don't, you don't want to make it feel like it's a, like it's an official government decision-making activity, that you have to get your points out right now, and if I don't make mischievous across the table for me agree, then I'm going to lose everything today. It changes the nature of the, of the process and the value, the quality of the outcome, and the value to the citizens that are participating. And to me, that's not worth saving one workshop. I would rather just, I would rather, you know, have a, have meaningful citizen workshops that are really designed to maximize their engagement, and then have the planning commission do, and planning commissioners obviously will participate in those, they do, they have shown up at those sort of sessions before, we have as well. But, you know, but we don't pollute them. I think we all try to, you know, take a step back and listen more than consider it our activity.
Mr. Kristof?
Sure. Well, personally, I like the idea. I mean, I think it's good. I mean, the planning commission has, you know, they've been meeting, and there have been a lot of workshops, and really, there hasn't, because of what this city's been going through, and because of the economy and so forth, there haven't been a lot of meaningful projects before then. I mean, I think this is an opportunity to get the planning commissioners to come there, and invite the community, and so that they can have this open dialogue. You could break them up and, you know, have people sit at various tables, there's a lot of different things you can do. And then they can convene back again, and, you know, adjourn the meeting and that sort of thing. But, I mean, I agree that it shouldn't be something that, that one meeting dictates the, the outcome of the general plan, or those specific issues. But, I mean, they come back from their planning commission, I mean, another two weeks later, whenever it is, and they have this, they have all this dialogue that they've talked about. And, so, I mean, I don't see any harm in it. I mean, I think it's, it's something that is, you know, it's a little interesting. I mean, it would be interesting, because, I mean, I think if you broke it down into smaller little sections, I think you can take something like the Cordish piece, and, I mean, it's a very large tract in the city of West Sacramento. People should have a lot of ideas about it. I mean, and that's how it should go. I mean, it shouldn't go, well, Cordish says, we got to make $500 million out of this particular development, or we can't do it, and, you know, then all of a sudden, it has to be a certain way. Well, that's not what the folks want. Folks want to have an opportunity to plan that. They want some open space. They want, they, they want to have some dialogue. They want to have this live and area, and that sort of thing. So, I mean, I think that we should have that. And I think that what you're trying to do might get to it. I don't know. It's better than just a regular planning commission meeting where they're not doing anything.
Yeah, I think we are actually all, we're all saying very, very similar things, I guess. It's, it's how do we achieve that? How do we achieve that authentic, legitimate citizen dialogue? And I just, you know, having done the blueprint ones that most of us were at, the port ones that most of us were at, and the Barton-Bardark Action Group ones that we were all at, that to the extent that, you know, it's a planning commission function, and you assign planning commissioners to tables, both the people at the tables and the planning commissioners focus on the planning commissioners, right? And they're like, well, you're a planning commissioner, you know, tell me about this. What do you think about that? What's happening with that? As opposed to the planning commissioner just sitting at the table listening. And that's, I think, that's the, that's what you're trying to achieve, is a, is an informed conversation, but one where it's not dominated by the people who are ultimately going to make the decision, because we'll have plenty of time in our own workshops and public hearings to give our opinions. And so, I, I think we're all trying to get to what you're describing, it's just, is the, is calling it a planning commission workshop going to be the right way to get to exactly what you're saying? Because I think they'll go anyway, we'll probably be there anyway, just because we want to see, and we want to listen to what people are saying. But I think it's more effective if we're there, so folks can see, and see us listening without being the focus of the work. Mr. Johansson?
You know, as far as the outreach too, we had, what, maybe 20 or so groups yesterday on the national night out. What I would suggest is try to find the captains, because I know there were certain people that were involved with organizing each of those, and reach out to those, because those are all over town, and if, you know, you may have people there that are interested enough to organize these neighborhood meetings, that you may have new and different faces coming to a meeting like that, that this is an opportunity to put your, your say in the hat of where the growth of this city is going.
All right, so logical break, so we've got one request to speak on the side, it's by Mr. Lowell.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor Willie Lowell, for the record, and I would just like to reiterate that if we're going to review the general plan, we still should seriously consider a South Port-South Sacramento bridge, and that would cut down on a lot of traffic. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowell. Are there other comments or discussion on this item? Did you, do you have sufficient direction? Okay, thank you. All right, then we'll proceed to item 10, which is consideration of issuance of a report concerning urgency interim ordinance 09-14, a temporary moratorium on medical marijuana dispensaries, and possible permanent approaches to dispensaries. Mr. Rickeloff?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Back on July 8th, the city council adopted urgency ordinance 09-14, which established a 45-day moratorium on the establishment of medical marijuana dispensaries. As part of that moratorium, state law requires that a report be provided to the council and to the citizens 10 days prior to the expiration of the moratorium. So the staff report that you have tonight, and tonight's discussion, is basically to satisfy that requirement. So the findings that basically we've made up to now in preparing the report is that we found, and we've used some information that's been available in other cities, we've had conversations at the request of one councilman, and followed what the city of Sacramento's been doing, but basically, there's at least 110 California local governments that have dealt with medical marijuana. Basically, one-fifth of all local governments in the state have been tackling this issue. Of that amount, about two-thirds have adopted at some point in time a moratorium. About 25 jurisdictions have adopted land use regulations that regulate the location of medical marijuana, and 29 jurisdictions have completely prohibited its distribution or operation in their city. The other thing that, principal finding was that the interest in medical marijuana dispensaries or collectives, as they're actually provided for under the state attorney general's guidelines for medical marijuana, has grown basically exponentially in recent weeks. Part of that is because of the statement that was made by Attorney General Eric H. Holder Jr. back in March, and followed up that he will not actively prosecute states that have compassionate laws for medical marijuana. Additionally, Governor Schwarzenegger has made statements in the press as recently as last month regarding the need to have a greater debate on the medical marijuana issue. What this has done is that the communities in our area, the city of Sacramento, city of Dixon, and several communities all throughout the area are having continuing debates about medical marijuana. When we looked at the issue staff-wise, we basically found that there were five basic approaches to regulating medical marijuana, or essentially, if you exclude extending the moratorium, really, four specific approaches. All those approaches basically involve extending the moratorium in some form or another. So specifically, those approaches are, first of all, using the land use zoning process. By using the land use zoning process, we basically determine, define where permitted or conditional uses are. A land use zoning process runs with the land and is automatically transferred from owner to owner. There are separation criteria that are developed. Those separation criteria typically deal with parks, schools, daycares, and in some cases, local jurisdictions actually have separation requirements from other residential development. Some communities also deal with churches, and you'll recall, last time, from some of the testimony here, there was a concern as to whether or not churches are an appropriate locational factor. The advantages of the approach are that it allows the secondary impacts of the use to be minimized through spacing requirements. The principal disadvantage is it doesn't deal with the operational characteristics of the dispensary. The second approach is basically using the business or operating license process. Here, we're regulating the specific operating conditions of the business. Ordinarily, jurisdictions that use this approve a license for a fairly short period of time. The license may be anywhere from six months to two years, with one year being the most typical. The advantages of this approach is it allows you to establish the operating conditions of how the dispensary will operate, issues such as security, lighting, other issues, limitations perhaps on the amount of cash that can be kept available, security not only in the dispensary, security in the, in the immediate area. The disadvantages of the approach, of course, are that it does not establish where facilities may locate significantly enhancing the likelihood of secondary impacts, since there's not locational factors. A third sort of, an approach, and one that's being more, it appears to be more common from just quickly searching the literature and looking at the material that's available statewide, is combining the zoning and business licensing process. Here, we're dealing with both the locational and operational issues of the dispensary. The ordinance that seemed to deal with this issue the most comprehensively, but it required a very long community process, is the city of Malibu in Los Angeles County. The approach has obviously the advantage of being able to more fully regulate the spatial as well as operational issues of a dispensary. The only disadvantage that I've heard is that it takes more time to establish such an ordinance. Fourth option would be to ban dispensaries or collectives outright in the city. Folsom and Davis are among the jurisdictions to take this approach, although there's some feeling that Davis really does not ban it outright. My looking at the ordinance suggests that it does. Advocates of this option indicate it sends a clear signal that medical marijuana is not welcome here. Opponents indicate that banning it makes it more difficult for residents to gain access, and some local governments that have prohibited it have been sued by advocates. The moratorium will expire on the 22nd of August. State law allows us to extend a moratorium up to 22 months and 15 days. Jurisdictions in this area have extended their moratoriums anywhere from six months up to 22 months. Sometimes it's predicated based on the advice that they get from staff as to how long it'll come up to take an ordinance based on their direction. And then the last issue, which was not in the staff report, that I just wanted to touch on briefly, is that there's been a lot of discussion recently about taxing dispensaries. The city of Oakland, two weeks ago, passed in a special mail-in election, a 1.8% gross receipts tax on their four licensed marijuana dispensaries, and there are a wide range of estimates as to actually how much revenue that will actually raise. Los Angeles, Santa Cruz, and Berkeley are among other jurisdictions that are looking at the possibility of taxing marijuana collectives or dispensaries. So tonight, the questions that we have for you are, what approaches should be investigated in preparation for coming back to you on the 19th of, of August? What is the approximate time range for how long the moratorium should be extended? And as well as to take comments from the audience. So with that, that concludes my staff report. Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rickeloff. Are there questions for staff who have proceeded the public comment? Mr. Johansson?
Yes, Steve, if, if we chose the option of doing both the business license and zoning, what would come before us? Would it be a, a special zoning category and a special business license, just for this particular use, or what would be the process? How would that come back to us?
What I assume is that it would be an ordinance, and that ordinance would specify both locational as well as operational issues. It would be an amendment to the zoning ordinance, you know, chapter 17, as well as potentially, and I'd have to defer to Mr. Mitchell here, you know, changes to the operating conditions of our business license process in the city, which I forget which chapter that is. So generally, the ones that I've seen are all done in one ordinance, but they make amendments to several parts of the municipal code.
Wouldn't it take a 218 election if you're going to raise a business license?
Well, we're not talking necessarily about raising- about raising the business license tax with this option, but if the city was, and that's an issue that I think would require a special election.
That would trigger that.
That would require voter approval. But in terms of the regulation, it could be done either way. You could do a single ordinance. It could be regulated the way a lot of communities regulate adult uses, where there is both language in their business license ordinance and also in their zoning code. And those can come forward as two separate items. The zoning portion has to go to the planning commission. The operational standards don't necessarily have to go to planning commission, but they could be all in one single ordinance.
Then, just maybe a follow-up question. One of the concerns here was the comment that the advocates, the people that advocate the prohibition of this approach, is that they're maybe creating some kind of liability to the city or its officials. What is that? What type of, I mean, is anybody prosecuting anybody for this? I mean, if it's technically illegal under federal law and the city's allowing it to happen, although you have the adjourned general saying he's not going to prosecute.
Is anyone prosecuting cities for allowing?
Well, the cities or city officials.
Not that I'm aware of at this point. The only lawsuits I know of have to do with cities that have attempted to ban outright medical marijuana dispensaries. And there have been lawsuits concerning release of impounded marijuana.
All right, we have quite a few requests to speak on this item. So again, just to remind folks that we observe, we do observe a strict three-minute rule in order to be equitable and fair to everyone. And if other folks have made your comments, particularly if you're affiliated with similar organizations, it's more than welcome, you're more than welcome to simply say that you associate yourself with their remarks as well. So first, Mr. Lowell, who will be followed by Sherri Barr. I'll just give the advanced one each time so you can prepare, so we don't have to call the name and have folks come all the way through the aisles to get up here. If you could, if Ms. Barr could be prepared to, or Mr. Barr could be prepared to testify next. All right, Mr. Lowell.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, William Lowell, again, for the record. And of course, the question, one of the main questions is where to locate them and where they're going to be combined with fast, not fast food places, but like AM/PM places. And those places already have, oh, we've seen, we've seen places like that get robbed several times. So they definitely need higher security systems. But as I understand it, the city of Oakland is pushing for this to improve their revenues. So I don't know whether that's a factor here or not. But anyway, the, like I say, the location, and it seems to me that eventually, if this is made legal, so legally, why, that would hurt the underground market for it. And it should cut down on the crime, but you never know. People get desperate for something and you have to sort of balance it out and decide whether the legal market's less dangerous than the illegal market. I think it'd be a lot less costly and safer myself, but then, who knows?
All right, thank you, Mr. Lowell. Sherri Barr will be followed by Julia Mangino, or Mangino, Mangino.
Good evening. I'm Sherri Barr. I live in Woodland, just part of Yolo County. I have came to the council or city planning about a year ago to see about opening up a dispensary here. There, and I guess there was a moratorium on. I'm not sure if the clerk, I had sent over some paperwork.
She's distributed to the council, yes.
Okay, so you guys have all the stuff that I have written. The way how I look at it, this is from a medical standpoint. I'm total healthcare. I've been at it almost 30 years. I'm like a virgin to this marijuana issue and dispensaries. I still operate my medical marijuana dispensary out of Woodland, but I do it by delivery. I still have my business license. I brought a copy of it. I have my state seller's permit. These people that call me, they're patients to me. I mean, I don't see them as any other thing. I don't look at myself as a drug dealer on the street. I look at that I'm taking, I'm providing a service to someone who does not have the opportunity, just like in healthcare, to be able to go get their medication. This here would end up, the ordinance that I had written that you guys have in front of you, went off of the attorney, city attorney's paperwork that he had done. I looked at other issues, the ones from Woodland. I incorporated those in. You know, this has to be, for it to work, Sacramento, I don't even know what Sacramento's doing. They don't even have an ordinance, per se. And they have all these clubs open. I'm bidding to these clubs. There's clubs that I would not even go back to myself. I don't like the way that they're set up. This is a chance for Sac, or West Sacramento. This is a new opportunity for you guys. I have, I don't know if you got the AB 390 bill? I don't know if I got, I sent that to you, which was done by Assemblyman Amiano. And he, his bill went from a 44 or 42-page bill. I rewrote it, and it's down to a 10-page bill. It's all medical. So when a patient comes and sees me, just like, say for instance, the mayor, and he would give me a phone call, call my clinic. This is all what patients are lacking. Oh, is my turn?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Well, you guys have my information. I hope you look at it, and I hope you are all for this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Barr. Julia Mangino, who will be followed by Nathan Sands.
Thank you. My name's Julia Mangino. I live in Donegan. I've been here in the country area, from Bay Area, for about seven years, and I really love it. It's a little harder living here. I have MS, and I have epilepsy. And I'm a card-carrying cannabis consumer. And I had a brother that had hepatitis C, and I made cookies and stuff for him when he got really sick, and he used it. My parents were very, were brought up Catholic and stuff, so we couldn't use this kind of stuff. But my mother saw that he couldn't even use his hands, so I had to feed him. And she saw he wasn't in pain, and it helped. He had liver cancer, and at the end, you can't control your arms. I have another sister in the hospital in San Francisco that's dying now, and she's dying of the same thing. Only in a hospital, of course, you don't have those kind of things to help you. So instead, my sister's being used as a guinea pig, where at a real hospital, they would just let her go. They're just using her as a guinea pig. They flush her so that she's cognant, but her lungs don't work. So they put her on machines and take her off to see how it's going to be, because it's a teaching school in San Francisco, you know, San Francisco General. I want to open one, too, so that people like my sister don't have to go to hospitals like San Francisco General because they don't have any other insurance. And they have no other way of getting pain relief but being at their mercy when it comes to the end. These medications, marijuana, the cookies that seniors eat, because they've never smoked anything in their life, much less marijuana. By eating it, it helps them sleep. It takes their pain away. If, you know, you're not looking at the financial aspect of it that a West SAC needs, or that the fact that other people in other, other states are making a lot of money on it, look at the compassionate aspect of it. It is medicine, and it does help people. If my sister could talk, she'd tell you that, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Nathan Sands, followed by Daniel Senna.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thank you for giving us the time to address this issue. My name is Nathan Sands. I am a resident and homeowner of West Sacramento and as well as a representative for the Compassionate Coalition, and we work to defend the rights of medical marijuana patients. And I'll comment real quickly that, yes, the reason you haven't seen me at other meetings is because I am happy with West Sacramento. It's a beautiful place. I've seen levy repairs happening. I know, and after hearing you deliberate on other issues, I'm much more confident even than even before. But moving right into the staff report, there were a couple.
Your time's up. Thank you very much.
The staff report mentions the getting public input, but I think they really only got public input from about one person, and I wasn't one of those people. But so I'd like to, but overall, it's a pretty good staff report. It's pretty solid, and I'd just like to address the few disagreements I have. And first, it went on page two where it talks about Sacramento. It says that the dispensaries are disguised as basically legitimate establishments, which isn't the case. They are legitimate legal establishments, and they have business licenses. They're not disguised as someone who has a business license. And additionally, the city has been in to review. The city, the narcotics officers have come in to review them. The mayor of Stockton came up and checked them out. They've been open and operating legitimately, and so that, and that's just because it is legal to operate these places. Next, down, farther down on the page, it says that the medical marijuana community doesn't really support operational restrictions, but that's not true from what I've seen. I think we're very supportive of option three here, which allows for zoning and operational restrictions. And when we spoke with Sacramento City recently, they asked specifically, what do you think of the Malibu ordinance? And so we wrote up, just a write-up of the few problems we have with it, the few things we changed, and sent it to them. I'd be happy to give you a copy as well. I think, and while it did take time to develop the Malibu ordinance, we can use that to kind of jumpstart this discussion and not have to repeat every single point, I hope. And yeah, and that's basically all I have to say, that I'd like to help be involved in this process. And if we, if I can find out who to send that to, I'll send that in, and I hope that we can allow legal and safe access for medical marijuana patients. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sands. Daniel Senna will be followed by Joe Marshall.
Good evening. My name's Dan Senna. I'm with Calcan and Delta Health and Wellness. We applied for the license before your date for the last session, and we've looked at various locations, so we just need a little bit of direction. I don't know if this is the time to give you suggestions on the places that we've looked at to see if there's any feedback one way or the other, or is it not?
It's your time.
Okay, good.
It won't be a dialogue back and forth.
Okay. Anyway.
And just let me clarify. So the next three speakers I have are all the same organization?
Correct.
All right. I just would, you know, we would normally ask organizations to stay completely within the three minutes. So I understand.
No, that's fine.
So I'm not going to do that, but if you can try to make sure that you're as brief as possible to be fair to the folks, other folks who have been here to speak.
Absolutely. Okay, anyway, I just wanted to say that we were just following up with you to say we'll stay on track and stay focused, and any input that you would like from us or vice versa, we're available.
All right. Thank you. And Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
And then Mr., I'm sorry, Latho, or?
Latino.
Oh, Latino, okay. I know why you'd do that.
Latino. Mr., 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 Mr. Mayor and also the council, I gave you all, you know, one, you know, pager, you know, type of a, like a letter. And I am, you know, not about to repeat that. You all can take a peek at that. I think most importantly is what we would like to do is we would like to take the opportunity to allow the powers-to-be to have a tour of some of the dispensaries, some of the good ones and the bad ones, so that, so that you know what you don't want. And you, and we also have it on a, like, you know, disc of what all of the industry is calling best practices, so that you know. Because I know that, I don't think anyone here has ever been within the walls of one of these dispensaries. So even if you don't want to take the tour, we, you know, have it on disc. And I want to make sure that everybody gets a copy of that, because then you'll have an idea of what these things are. And if I can, like, you know, help, we can have a tour, the chief of police, the mayor, I am, I mean, all of you can go. That would, you know, be a very interesting day. But I would offer that, and on that paper, you also have my number if you need anything, because we have copies of ordinances passed Malibu and all of these, and it's great to be here because you guys have already, like, you know, had your homework done. But there's a bunch of things that in these ordinances are not appropriate, because this isn't Oakland. This isn't, you know, LA, or this is a smaller area. So there's, you know, things that would be appropriate here that may not be appropriate elsewhere. Oh, all right, then, thank you very much.
Right, thank you.
Hey, Joel, can I, let me ask you a question. You mentioned LA, and you mentioned Sacramento and Oakland. In LA, a number of years ago, they had like four or five of these dispensaries all around. All of a sudden, the Holder comes out and says what he says.
Thousand, now they think.
Now they have, what, 1,000, 400, or whatever it was. It was.
It's ridiculous.
Are there that many sick people down there?
Greed.
Okay, thank you.
Greed.
I got you.
All right, and Sam Lathen?
How are you guys tonight? This is my second time up here. Last time, I shared a story about my stepdad that was dying of cancer. We're not putting in roads. We're not building a house or an apartment or changing the freeways or, you know, it's none of those things. I don't know if any of you folks have anybody dying right now of cancer or something of a sort. It's easy to sit up there healthy, just as I am myself today, to not really have much concern in that area because you're looking at bricks and wires and doing all this other building things. We're talking about the human body. We're talking about if I stuck an eyelash in your eye right now, you'd be panicking trying to find something to get that eyelash out. You'd probably tap your buddy next to you and go, "Hey, can you, can you help me get this thing out of my eye?" That's just an eyelash in your eye. That's not cancer that's eaten up your body that's going to destroy you. When you've tried every medication that's on the market, and none of these medications are helping you, you're losing weight every day, you can't eat, you have no energy, you can't get out of bed, and you're going to be dead in a couple of weeks, which was my situation with my stepdad, that's prominent. That's beyond all this blah, 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 to be honest with you. I'm being, I'm being serious here, because this stuff is upsetting. It makes me upset because we're talking human bodies here. We're not talking buildings and pipes and all this other stuff. Something needs to be done right away. I'd rather see an ordinance put in place or something in place where you put the dispensaries in right away and you let three or four open right away so the sick people can get help today. Not, you know, moratorium, we do this paper, we've got to go check with these guys and these guys. And so the person sitting there laying sick, dying, and you just, you know, we're all healthy and fine here? No, that's not, that's not how life should be and humans should treat humans. This needs to be looked at real strongly in health, period. Forget all the other stuff, because all the other stigma, it's all been there for years and years and years because of that. But that isn't what this is all about. This has nothing to do with that. So I would appreciate you guys to really look at this because you may have a sick sibling or a relative or a friend or somebody in the near future that gets diagnosed with cancer, just as my grandfather did. And, you know, it's no joke. So did my Uncle Tony. I mean, I saw a lot of my family. I had 14, I had 14 uncles and aunts. My dad had 14 brothers and sisters. I come from a very large family on the other side of the bridge. I've seen a lot of death. I've buried a lot of family. I've carried a lot of caskets. I want to keep these people here as long as I can. I love my family. I love people around me. I love you guys. I love everybody. I love life, period. So let's do something from your heart, and it's okay to do something good. It's okay to open these doors up. It's okay. So that's my side of it, and be open-hearted and just maybe a little different mindset, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. That concludes the public testimony on item 10, so we'll return to the council. Actually, first, let me ask you, Mr. Rickla, do you have any additional information or responses or clarifications?
Just two responses to the things that were identified with regard to the comments from Ms. Barr. We have a copy of what she suggested in terms of her draft ordinance. And in regard to Mr. Sands, I took the liberty of quoting the City of Sacramento's staff report that indicated that they were, in fact, disguised as a collective, so it was not an interpretation necessary on my report, but I respect his comment.
All right, Mr. Vegas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't have the opportunity to be at the last hearing, so some of the questions that I might have may have already been addressed. You know, certainly, this issue generates a lot of emotion for folks from one end of the spectrum to the other. And I'm just curious if somebody can help me understand, because I don't have too much familiarity with the dispensaries firsthand, so I actually am interested in taking a tour to understand what it is that I think we're going down this path and ultimately will have, if not rightly in our community, certainly across the river for quite some time to come, given the state and federal conversation about it. When folks come in to get—do you have to get—do you have to have a card that shows that you have been authorized by a physician or that you are somehow in need of marijuana in order to purchase it?
I wish police were here, because I'm really not familiar with all the ways.
I don't know how to proceed.
But there is a card.
Okay.
A state-issue card.
All right. We have an officer here, so maybe—I don't know. No, that's what I'm saying. We have an officer here, so maybe if—
Or there can be a—
I'm just curious, because I'd like to understand—
A prescription written by a primary caregiver.
Okay. I just—I'd like to—I think it's a fundamental question that I think would help me at least be able to understand or be able to explain to the public in general when—
Yeah, the ballot proposition does not require a written prescription under the terms of— I know it's tempting, but we're—the testimony period's complete. And so the ballot proposition provides for both written and/or oral instruction, recommendation, not specifically avoids the use of the word "prescription" by a physician. The county has taken up the issue of issuing the ID cards on its own. It's not required to do that under the terms of either the implementing legislation or the proposition.
So, okay. So it sounds like we've already had the public discussion on it, so you're looking for some— or the city manager, I'd imagine, is looking for some guidance on how to proceed. It seems to me, without—I don't know where the council was last time, given the conversation, we're starting moving in the direction, and I think it's just going to be incumbent upon us to try to figure out a way how to manage this properly for our community. I think, given what Oakland's doing, I think that the gross receipts tax is certainly something we need to consider. I don't know if it's part of this conversation here this evening or whether it's going to be a future conversation about how do we capture that, because the fact of the matter is, it's coming, whether folks like it, don't like it, or don't care about it. And I think it's incumbent upon us to capitalize on the opportunity that I think even the proponents of the dispensaries say, "Tax it, but just let us do it." So to me, that certainly makes sense, and that's a conversation I think we need to have pretty quickly so we capitalize on the opportunity. Other than that, I think the second option, I think the sort of the hybrid, you know, is the hybrid—
Three.
Oh, I'm sorry. The hybrid is both, number three, I'm sorry, regulating through both zoning and business license processes. I think what that does is it allows us to have the conversation about where we think it's most appropriate to have them, and then it further allows us to, you know, license them for a determined period of time, whether it be a year or less than, and then put some restrictions on that. I think that's the best way to manage a situation that we don't know what—ultimately, what that would look like in our community, but I think it's the appropriate thing to do.
Mr. Johansson.
Yeah, I would concur with Councilmember Vegas on that hybrid. I did, between the time this came up and the present, I had the opportunity to tour a facility in Sacramento. And it was—it's just a building that looks like a doctor's office. What would happen is there's a screen door, someone will put a card through. Inside, there's a guard, and you walk inside, it's like a waiting room from, like, any other doctor's office. And there's a—we had a bakery in there and, like, a sitting area. So it was really—for me, it looked like a doctor's office. It really didn't look different at all. I think, just going through, Mr. Rickla, the review that staff did, it sounds like you did kind of a good job of capsulizing, encapsulating what research you could do in a limited time, but I think there's a lot that hasn't been talked about here. My understanding is these can operate as nonprofits or co-ops, and there's better ways to do this. You have the issue of being able to grow your supply. And I really wasn't—I—there was kind of a question I really wasn't sure about because the product is market rate. And to me, you know, and there was a conversation, well, you know, the prices vary because there's a risk element. So to me, that means—I don't know where the stuff is coming from, but I know you can—the co-op or whatever could do it themselves, but there's a lot that has to be fleshed out here. And I would—I would support continuing the moratorium. I understand the person's comments that there are people in need now, but I don't think—I don't think a ban is the way to go here. It's just going to expose the city to a lawsuit, and, you know, we don't have the money to do that. And I think—I think, you know, there is an indication that these facilities should, you know, we should take a look at these things. I don't think that just a business license alone is going to do it. We need to look at where they're going to go, and we need to really get into the operational aspects, because I think what—the main problem with these are how it impacts the neighborhoods and also, you know, the code enforcement issues, basically, that we can make sure these things are, you know, people aren't hanging around outside. And I think this model ordinance has some of that, but, you know, I would—I would propose maybe getting a task force. I know it's more work and it's more staff time, but, you know, I'd like to have a police presence on it, law enforcement presence, you know, maybe some of the people that have run these things successfully in Sacramento that are good models that we think would be there, you know, maybe some people that are actually patients, which—and to really kind of look at what this ordinance would look like to provide our residents the most protection. Because the bottom line is, you know, the possible disruption to neighborhoods. You know, I think the last time—I think there were some comments about crime, but I don't know if the crime's really robbery, you know, more than an AMPM, I think that was mentioned last, but it's really—you have to—you have to run these things like a business, like a medical office. And, you know, the conversation I had with the person, the operator in Sacramento was really, you know, it's how you advertise. You don't really advertise, you don't have signs on the windows, and it's really how you blend in and like a medical office would do. So, you know, I would—I don't think we're ready at all right now to do anything on this, but I think with the limited extension of the moratorium and maybe a task force outside city staff that we can come together and really flesh out, get an ordinance that we want to have, you know, this acceptable to us here.
Mayor Proton Beers.
Well, as far as the conversation, I think we should move forward with an approach along item three. And I think we really don't want to reinvent the wheel. I think the Malibu ordinance is something to build on, and we should just tailor it to our city as quickly as possible. I don't—I don't see any reason to, you know, dwell on this forever. I mean, a lot of work's already been done. I think we can quickly assimilate what's appropriate or not. So you need zoning because it's appropriate to look at uses in certain parts, I presume, and my support would be that would always be a conditional use, not a permitted use. But that's my perspective as I sit here, so if that changes, then I'd like to, you know, we'll have that discussion. I think you need the business license aspect, just simply to manage the elements of the business that are unique to that type of business so that we can, you know, control that. And to be honest, the other piece to this that gets really important, and I think the mayor mentioned it at the last meeting, was that we need to be sure that we don't over—overuse this, or that there's not too many facilities for the need for West Sacramento. I don't see this as a regional draw issue. We should have enough dispensaries to serve our community, period. That's the only thing I'm interested in. And for that perspective, and, you know, we're a city of 47,000 people, I don't think we really need to get too involved in this whole tax issue. I don't see it as a revenue maker. I see it simply as we have a new proposed use. We want to incorporate that into our zoning law and ordinances for operation, and we've got some tools already, some volunteers that will help us. So I think we should just move down that road. So we should—staff should give us some idea of how long they think we should extend the moratorium, because obviously, we need to deal with that issue by next week. So I think in the context of looking at number three, building off what's already known, how much time would we need to extend it to achieve that need? And that's in respect to the—we don't want this to, you know, go on. We're not—I'm not interested in trying to maximize how long we can avoid this. We should just deal with it like a use and move on.
Mr. Kristof.
Well, I take a little bit different approach. I mean, I think that the business license and the land use are—they're critical. I mean, I think it can't be by schools, can't be by parks, can't be by daycares and churches. So, I mean, I think you need to find someplace that—in industrial area or something like that that you can have these things. Now, the business aspect of it is where I would probably change. I would probably put a $50,000 to $60,000 license in place, and that's what it would take. And I would take a 218 election. We'd have to take it to an election, but I think this is an important enough issue to let the people vote on it. I mean, I think that, you know, that it's something that could have a very spirited debate around town. And so, I mean, I think that—and the reason I have the business license at such a high price, and that is because I think what we need to do is we need to pay police or enforcement people that have the enforcement, we need to pay them to check the records, to make sure that this isn't another Los Angeles, that this is not just a—an area of greed. We need to make sure that the people that are going there are the people that actually need the services. They have to have their medical cards. They have to have their prescriptions. They have to have, you know, check the books and the records and have somebody that—and this is a way to pay that person in order to do that. I think that it can't also be in an area where you have alcoholic beverages or you sell regular drug paraphernalia, the pipes and the water pipes and all of the other kinds of things. I mean, I think that this needs to make sure that it is, without a doubt, strictly clean and legit. And one other area that I would probably put on it is I would probably put an Oakland kind of tax as a way of generating revenue. But those are just some of the ideas that I'll just throw against the wall for staff to disseminate. Thank you.
I'm supportive of the hybrid approach in three, the zoning and the business license process. We've talked about zoning in a wide variety of ways, but, I mean, in the long run, the zoning classification for this use ought to be a fairly benign one. I mean, there's really no— In the—in an ideal world, we would have the same zoning restrictions that we do for pharmacies, which are actually not that restrictive, right? I mean, you can have pharmacies right next to the ice cream counter at Rite Aid, right? So, I mean, we don't have the same level of anxiety about the facilities, even though it's essentially the same function. It's the dispensing of a drug, which may be substantially less impactful than actually some of the prescription pharmaceuticals that you employ. It might have much more severe impacts on kids, where do they get their hands on it or what have you. But we have, you know, hundreds of years of history, a hundred-year history of regulating pharmacies. And so I think we're comfortable at this stage of knowing what they look like, what the regulatory framework is, that we have the appropriate controls in place at the state, federal, professional, and local level. So we're already there. We're just not there yet with dispensaries. And there are plenty of examples of bad actors in places that are not doing a good job and don't represent the kind of ultimate establishment that we want to see, which— So for me, it's sort of in the—until we get to that point, what's the right set of regulatory approaches? And so I know for dispensaries, it feels like, you know, people are more piling on these, all these rules and requirements and what have you. To some extent, we are. We have to, because we don't have the option of just saying it's a health issue, everything else be damned. Our specific job here, the health issue has already been decided by the voters of the people of California and by the legislature and the enactment of SB 420. Our job is to make sure that it doesn't have corollary impacts in neighborhoods or in the community. That is specifically what we're charged to do. So we can't just say it's a health, everything else be damned, and go ahead and start opening dispensaries tomorrow. That's not—that's not consistent with the oath of office that we took. But, you know, for me, it's going to have to be an iterative process that I think we'll probably have a more—more restrictions than are probably necessary at the outset as we kind of test what's going to happen. And then we ought to have checkpoints or something in the ordinance and the ordinances that we pass and say, "Okay, you know, we'll look at this, you know, it's 12 months out and see, and have some things that we'll review." And it might be that we either turn up or turn down the volume on some of those—some of those rules, depending on what the actual, you know, what the actual market starts to look like in the community, because we just don't—there's not enough examples for us to do that, to rely on in other places. So I think that approach makes sense. I know Sacramento is considering everything from just zoning them as commercial office, you know, just adding them to that part of the matrix with no other requirements whatsoever, all the way to, you know, some of the descriptions that Mr. Kristof outlined. So there's a broad range of options in the zoning piece and certainly in the business license piece. And the business license one, I think, is the area where we have the best option to do, deal with the regional draw issue, because I do have that concern. As we're developing the ordinance, we have to pay attention to what's happening in Sacramento, because if they're—if they either try to adopt an outright ban, which I think is unlikely, or an ordinance that is so restrictive that we become the only reasonable option in the region, it has—there's problems. And we need to—we need to have a mechanism, and the business license approach is the best mechanism to do that if we are able to regulate the flow, that, you know, the number, as we—again, as we see how it works. And it may be that we say that number is X, and we have that number for a year, so it's not a problem. Now, let's have X times two or whatever. Or we may say, "This is about what we think we can accommodate. It's meeting the needs of our community," but we just—to me, it's going to have to be iterative, because we can't know all these things in advance. Our job is to protect, but also to take care of the health of the community and also to comply with what the people have said through their adoption of Proposition 215. So I'm supportive of this. I don't know what the timeframe is, how long you think we would need a moratorium to be extended in order to do the kind of work that's been necessary. Now, we've—you've heard two options from up here, which was, Mr. Johansson suggested that we convene a task force and have a bit more elaborated process in the development of these, of the two—the business license and the zoning process. And Mr. Beers said, "Take a look at Malibu and see what works from that ordinance, and, you know, let's get on with it." And I'm not—I'm not trying to create an opposition between the two of you, but, I mean, it's two different approaches to how to proceed. But do you have some sense of how long you would need?
I think the actual period that we'll come back with, if you will, convene our interim group that we've established of city officials and the city attorney can come back to you with an approximate time period by the 19th.
I mean, I'd be willing to go the 22 months, 15 days. I mean, I don't—I don't have any problem.
Well, my only concern about going that long is—well, I have a couple. But, I mean, one of them is actually, to your point, which is if we—if we have the discussion about business license fees and/or some gross receipts tax or something, for it to go on the ballot within the time period, you know, you wouldn't want the moratorium to expire 22 months from now, and we would not have enough time to place that on the ballot. So the moratorium would expire, we wouldn't have an effective ordinance. And it's not—it's not—it—so to me, at least—you have to pay—we have to pay attention to that timeframe and say, "How much lead time would we need if we were going to go to a ballot?" That's not three months from now, but it's also not 22. Special election.
Important issue.
And perhaps to elaborate on your point, Mr. Mayor, is that, given those two approaches that you've laid out, there would be a time period for each, a substantially shorter period if we follow Mr. Beers' recommendation of just doing the Malibu ordinance and coming back with it, a slightly longer period with Mr. Councilman Johansson's option of convening a task force. So—but I would like to get the input from other members of the combined task force of the City of— officials and come back to you of the 19th. But I'm thinking maybe it might be somewhere on the order of six months to a year, or slightly longer, if we did a task force, somewhere in that range.
Okay, and in that period, would, I mean, there's been at least enough interest expressed in the whole tax implication issue. I mean, there's been some conversation, folks may or may not be interested in, but we'd want to know, so that work could be completed in that same time period. The other question that I had had about it from the last time was about use. All right, so I know SB 420, the statute says that the law does not allow folks who are, who are, to engage in the smoking of medical marijuana in any place where smoking is prohibited by law, within 1,000 feet of a school or rec center, youth center, unless it's a residence, on a school bus, while driving a car or a boat. That's it, right? So there's, there's no, as far as I can tell, there's no restriction, for example, on the smoking of medical marijuana in the smoking area at Rayleigh Field during a game, which does not fit into any of those prohibitions, but that's not an appropriate location, right? So I'm interested in some assessment of the use side, as well as the dispensing side, and what our options are in that regard, in that period that we are, during the period of the moratorium. So Steve's kind of ballpark was, it might be six months to a year, depending on which approach, but they'll come back in two weeks and give us a better sense of that, once he's had an opportunity to discuss this with the police and the other departments that would be involved. To, yeah, that the moratorium would need to be in place that long in order for the ordinance to come forward, but, I mean, we can't extend it again. I mean, within the, if we said, if we came back in two weeks and said we're going to extend it for six months, within that six-month period, we could still extend, we would still have an additional 16 months, 16 and a half months to extend if we needed that time.
That has been done by other communities, whether or not.
Okay.
Then I'd like to see the financials for the enforcement.
Are you, I can never tell whether you're trying to speak.
So the earliest it would go into effect is when? When, the earliest trigger for the ordinance to go into effect?
Well, once again, that was an approximate range, but I'd want to confer with other departments to get their sense of how long it would take also, and who will be drafting it.
Okay. All right, so, do you require form, no, you just need direction on the approaches to proceed. So I think you've got the consensus around option three, and bring back some more, some more fleshing out of that for next week, when you bring, for the next meeting, when you also bring back the moratorium extension. All right, thank you. No, I'm sorry, this is not appropriate. All right, council calendar. Ms. Richardson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to point out two items that are not on the calendar, that are coming up. On August 12th, at 10:30, there's going to be the River Point Art Dedication, and that's over by the IKEA store, and it's, I'm told it's going to be, the dedication ceremony's going to be just adjacent to where the T-Mobile telephone store is. And then on, I'm sorry?
What time?
Oh, I'm sorry, 10:30 a.m. And then on August 13th, at 5:00 p.m. in the council chambers, the fire department is going to be having their fire badge pinning ceremony for some employees who have been promoted, and then they're going to also have some awards that'll be given out at that same time, and that'll be here in the Galleria.
All right, any other questions on the calendar? City manager report? Oh, now we are, in case anyone was thinking they were leaving anytime soon, city manager report, we're doing the update on the budget.
Yes, just very briefly, I did distribute a short summary of the direct impacts of the state budget, and I wanted to just review that and answer any questions you might have. We'll be coming back on the 19th with alternatives for addressing this, and we've been examining that, as you might imagine, and feel like we have a number of alternatives that would allow us to address the take, both in property tax and in redevelopment, without any extraordinary implications for ongoing operations. But it will, it will have implications in terms of our flexibility, our reserves will obviously be drawn upon. So with that, I want to point out that we did have what I would view a disproportional hit in both property tax and redevelopment, because of the particular structure of our revenue sources. We get a little bit more property tax than most communities of our size, and consequently, we've had to pay a lot more. So we pay almost 5% in terms of the borrowing, but fortunately for us, it is a borrowing, as opposed to just a take, and that allows us to perhaps internally borrow, and then have that repaid at the time we are repaid by the state. So we have some flexibility in the general fund, but we certainly don't have any beginning balance that's adequate to address this amount. I did want to point out, too, that we have received word from the assessors' office that our overall property tax will go down by negative 4%, or go down by 4%. That's more than we had anticipated. So that's $340,000 more, and so that has to be accounted for in our calculations as well. So we're over 5.5% relative to what our budget contemplated. Again, we think we have solutions for that, and we'll bring those back on the 19th. Redevelopment is even a more substantial hit. When the legislature decided that they would not take the highway user tax, they bumped up redevelopment, and they actually bumped it up by more than they would have taken from us in the highway user tax. So we, because we have a heavy reliance on redevelopment, we had a substantial hit, $6.5 million out of a budget of about 22, you know, somewhere close to 30%. A very substantial hit, certainly more than we have in terms of discretionary income in an annual, on an annual basis. We get about $900,000 a year that we have to devote to projects above our operating costs and debt service. So clearly not enough to cover $6.5 million. We'll have to go to our reserves and bond proceeds and other kinds of mechanisms, but we think we can do it within redevelopment, and so we'll show you several different ways that that can be done.
Are we going to sue for reimbursement?
Are we going to sue the state to be?
Sue the state? Are we going to join the agents' arwell? So far, I guess they have made the decision, but.
My understanding is that CRA intends to sue. I've not seen the theory behind a suit, and at this point, we haven't been asked to do anything in support of a lawsuit. That would have to come back as a separate matter. Our intent is to give you the alternatives of how to address this, whether we have to ultimately address it would be a function of somebody else's activity on the lawsuit. We won't, with redevelopment, we won't have to make any payments until next May, be the first payment, so it's not something we have to undertake immediately. But it is, it is real, and we want to plan for it early, and simply put the money aside and protect it, and then go about our business, because, you know, assuming that there will be another outcome, I think is a dangerous proposition, and it's also distracting. We need to move on. So those are the two major issues. Obviously, the road fund, the highway user tax did not get taken, but because we were preparing for and examining our own operations, we've really identified that we, we've been operating at a deficit for some time, and even, it would have been a bigger deficit, but we're still operating at a deficit. We need to fix that as well, so we're working on strategies to do that. And we may or may not have information on that issue on the 19th. And then, I think we talked about this earlier, we did receive the COPS grant. We were one of a few jurisdictions in the area that got it, and it was very helpful. As you recall, we had a community response team in the budget that we removed from the budget. We hadn't filled it, but it had been authorized, and this would allow us to replace that community response team, and so I think that's going to be very beneficial to the community, and it's, you know, it's a real asset to us, and it's one of those things that is part of the stimulus package that starts immediately. We get to have, put those services in place, and we get to spend that money, and it starts to affect the economy, so we're very pleased to receive it. I'd be happy to address any questions.
Are there questions for the city manager? I know I sent email updates out as it was happening, but I just, I want to publicly acknowledge the work of Senator Wolk. The legislature has absolutely no comprehension or understanding of the importance of redevelopment, or how totally skewed this budget situation and solution, quote unquote, solution is, in terms of its impact on the economic engines of California and the poorest communities. This hits, this hits cities like ours much, much harder, this kind of a take, as opposed to cities like Roseville, or Folsom, or Beverly Hills, or cities with much more, with much more wealth, and it's just patently unfair. And the hit, the total hit from the state of nearly 8 million, I'm sorry, over $8 million to our city, you know, when we were doing the budget reconciliation just a month ago, or just a little over a month ago, and we were trying to deal with, how do we, from the collapse of the entire global economy, the meltdown of the housing market, the impacts on our revenues that we were trying to cope with, were in the, in the order of magnitude of $5 million, right? That's what we were trying to cope with. The, you know, the entire planet's economic system falling apart was causing us to have to deal with a substantial cut of $5 million. And the legislature by itself is having an effect of 160% of the, 160% more than the collapse of the global economy, and it still did not make a viable state budget. And, I mean, the, I mean, it is, I mean, everyone here, and everyone in the state is outraged, but with good, we're definitely a good example of how immoral what the state did was, and what the impact it's going to have. But our senator was, and I know it's common for folks in their own districts to think that the legislature is horrible, but their own legislators are great, and they're 90% wrong, but the, our senator actually stood up for us all the way to the bitter end, and she refused to vote for the highway users' tax, which, for that ripoff, which weakened it a lot. They had to take the special language out of it, which allowed her to be killed in the assembly, and she refused to vote for the redevelopment take, which, again, forced them to, they couldn't get her vote, or a lot of other, or a few other Democrats, and none of the Republicans, and so they had to take out the urgency clause in that legislation. She had a big impact on the ultimate outcome of the package to our benefit, and it's going to cost her, for sure. The leadership of the legislature's made it clear that, you know, she's going to pay a price for standing up for us instead of standing up for them, and I just, I want to, I know all of us have said something to her in private, but I wanted to publicly acknowledge Lois Wolk and her work on our behalf in the Capitol, all the time, but that night in particular was certainly in the, in the class of heroic, in terms of that. The only other request I would make to the city manager is that we put on the agenda for the 19th, in our, in our, the legal section of our closed session, the potential of joining a suit on the redevelopment take. The proposition one eight take, it's wrong, but it's legal, but the redevelopment take is both wrong and illegal, and we ought to, we ought to at least look at the options that are before us, in terms of trying to make that right. Anything else on city manager report?
Just one other thing. You may have noticed all the incredible progress across the street with the highway being pulled up in gigantic chunks, and, you know, the crunching and crashing that we hear all day long. Unfortunately, in the process of doing that, somehow we severed a power line that serves the streetlights, not the traffic signals, but the streetlights, and the area west of Jefferson is out. We're not exactly sure how much, but we're told that it might be out for as much as one or two weeks. So, just so you know why that's happening.
All right, city attorney report?
I think you report?
Staff directions for members of the council. I know several members of the council were out last night for the National Night Out Against Crime, and Mr. Johansson already mentioned, I think we had 15 officially recognized, and quite a few others that didn't register, but a lot of neighborhoods out in the community having just good old-fashioned American block parties with hot dogs, and competing brownies and pasta salads, and to both, you know, place a flag in the ground that we're watching each other's homes, and their parks, and our kids, and crime is not welcome, but also just to get to know each other, and to chat about the issues, and about the future of the city. And I was definitely encouraged, you know, going around neighborhood to neighborhood, you know, hearing the, both the pride in our community, but the optimism for the future in some very difficult times, but people really believed in the future of West Sacramento, and were excited about it, and have fantastical ideas about new businesses that ought to be opening in the worst recession since the Depression. But it was a very, it was a very positive event. A lot of folks, you know, really, I think, contributed to the health of their own neighborhoods and communities, so it was great.
Mr. Mayor, I think it's worth noting, too, that we're able to organize a lot of that event because of a grant we receive from Target every year, and they've been a real supporter of this activity.
And Target actually was out at the Bright Rodrick Community Action Group event at Bright Park, and I also want to take an opportunity to thank both chiefs, Terrell and Drummond, who graciously volunteered to be a part of the Dunk Tank, which I thought was a nice bonus for the event that took place at Bright Park. They tried to get some of us to go, but I think we deferred till next year.
No, no, they got, they got Mr. Johansson, who was dunked many times.
Oh, I didn't realize this. Was that earlier than in the evening?
Six.
He was, he insisted on going when the water was clean.
Good move, yeah, bring your own chlorine, I guess, right?
All right, and do we have any staff direction from other staff direction members of the council?
About a little over a week ago, we lost a really good friend of West Sacramento, a guy named Obie Brandon. I think all of us up here knew him, and many of staff knew him, and his sister worked for the city, and I'd just like to make a motion to adjourn in the honor of him, and what he's accomplished, and what he did throughout, for not only West Sacramento, but him, the region, and the state, and everything else. I mean, the guy did a lot of things, really, really good guy.
All right, that's been seconded by Mayor Proten Beers. Very, very, very appropriate. So all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? That motion carries unanimously, and the meeting is adjourned in honor of Obie Brandon.